Welcome to the Select Board Meeting, Bennington Select Board Meeting for tonight, August tenth, two thousand and twenty. Nice steamy night for a Select Board Meeting. I'm Donald Campbell. I'm the Chair of this Board, and I'd like to ask the Board members to please introduce themselves, starting with Bruce.
Aye, Bruce Lee Clark.
Good evening, Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Jim Tarrell.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
Also with us on the line are Town Manager Stuart Hurd, and Assistant Town Manager Daniel Monks, and Nancy Lively, our Secretary. So the first order of business is that I have to read that due to the COVID- nineteen pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Phil Scott pursuant to addendum six, Executive Order one dash twenty, Act ninety-two, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend this meeting, however, the public may view it on Cat TV and call in at one, six four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six, entering the meeting ID eight, five, six, five, four, nine, eight, four, five, four, nine. I'll put that up on the screen in just a minute. And if technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at its time and place to be determined. All votes that are not unanimous will be done with a roll call vote in accordance with the law. So I'm very sorry to do this to you, Bennington, but the first order of business is that we have to have a very brief executive session on a legal matter. We almost never do this before the meetings, but in anticipation of some of the comments we may hear during citizens' comment, we need to have this executive session first. So I would look to the Board for a motion to go into a very brief executive session.
I don't want to.
On a legal matter with no decisions to be made.
I would be happy to make that motion.
Thank you, Bruce. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeanne. All in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Okay, so we're going to go into executive session. I'm going to, I'm going to remove from the meeting Cat TV and Nancy Lively, and we will be back in just about five minutes. Some of. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, please unmute yourselves, Board members. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are out of executive session. So we have with us a number of guests who are up next on deck, if we can say that. We're very thankful to have them with us tonight. And but the first order of business, and I hope you all, I say this to our guests, I hope you don't mind being patient, is to allow for public comment. So we have three, it looks like three callers waiting at this point, and I.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda first?
Consent agenda first, yes. So let me throw this up, and while this is on the screen, do I have a motion on the consent agenda for the minutes of July twenty-seventh and July twenty-second, twenty-twenty, and the warrants as circulated? Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to clear any questions with Stuart on the warrants ahead of time, but if you have any lingering questions on the minutes or the warrants, now would be the time to bring them up. Do I have a motion for the purposes of discussion?
Some of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So any discussion about either the minutes or the warrants as circulated?
Nancy, on the July twenty-seventh minutes, line one sixty-three, I think it should read that I noted that this can be made into a political statement, but it is not, and had hoped that we would have heard from more people of color in the community.
Okay.
Any other corrections to the minutes? I know we got, we had some spelling, a few spelling things that got corrected ahead of time. Thank you very much for that. Not finding any further input on the consent agenda, I would ask the Board to please unmute themselves. And all in favor of the consent agenda as circulated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, consent agenda's passed. Now we'll move on to the public, the public comment section. We have a very large agenda tonight. We are going to ask people to try to keep their comments to a brief, fairly brief, three minutes if possible. I'm going to, this is the dial-in information for anybody that wants to join this meeting by phone. I'm now going to put this down so that I can see the rest of my screen, and I'm going to enter the first caller into our meeting. I'd ask before I do for everybody else to mute themselves, please.
Donald, Stuart is hand up.
Oh, I didn't see it. Sorry, Stuart.
Well.
Caller ending in two oh three. Wait just a minute, please. Go ahead, Stuart.
Uh, did, did we vote to amend the agenda? Because we've added the Battle Day Celebration update, which was not on the original agenda that was posted.
Okay, so that was circulated after, afterwards.
This was, yeah, you noted that there is a draft on the top of it because we would need to amend it.
Okay.
As the meeting gets underway.
Thank you, Stuart, for catching that. So, Board, I would look for a motion to amend our agenda to include the Bennington Battle Day update as, as noted in the revised agenda. May I have a motion on that, please?
To amend the agenda to add the Battle Day Celebration update.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, so that, I'm looking at the original agenda, Stuart. What number was that?
We've, we've put that at number four. Follow the Bennington College reopening plan.
Okay. That makes you Curtis Reed, number five after that. Okay. So caller ending in two oh three. Thank you for your patience. We are in the public comment section of our meeting at this point, and please give us your name and tell us where you live, and briefly, if you can, please tell us what's on your mind.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yeah, we're watching you on Cat TV. It's full lag phase in the video and the audio.
The lag stuff.
Yeah, so again, this is Peter Janelle is calling. And you know, I'm a local resident, born and raised in Bennington. Family has been here for a couple of generations. And I presently am the owner of Mount Anthony Bennington Hospital, as most of you know, for about thirty-two years. And we're calling today, I'm calling in today to discuss the Everestate and the property, the SBC property. Excited about the opportunity to potentially move forward with this property and buy it, or have the town hopefully buy it, so that we can include it in our community and make it into a community recreation area and a historic area with the Everett Mansion. I have done some work on the field for SBC a couple of years ago, and rebuilt the baseball field. I also have rebuilt Mount Anthony's baseball field. I've been doing that since oh eight. Most, most of you know that. So you knew my mother also very well, and my father, but Mary Janelle is in particular. Very passionate about Bennington, very passionate about its future. We really believe that is a great opportunity for us as a community in the town to purchase this property and convert it into a real community property. That's, that's my purpose for call tonight, support this, the letter that was in the banner today, and to get involved in any kind of groups, boards that would be assembled. And so that's what we're trying to see if you guys have any interest tonight in pursuing this.
So Peter, first of all, let me just say thank you very much for all you've done for the community, which is a lot. We know that you've been a lot for the community, and I hope you'll continue to do a lot more. Yes, your mom was great. I remember you well from high school, quite an athlete. I'm sure you still are. This is a very delicate situation for us. We're following our, our, the advice of our lawyer very carefully on this, and because there's an existing contract in place, we are very limited for a number of reasons in what we can say or commit to, or even imply support for at this point. So I'm going to have to say this is a time for citizens' comment. We're excited to hear what you have to say, and you're not going to love what I have to say, but we, we really are pretty much hamstrung in, in being able to give you an emotive response to that suggestion at this point. But.
Well, I understand that. I just wanted to start my process with you.
That's great. As things play out, you know, we certainly will, would like to remain in touch with people, but for now, we need to, we need to just let, let the process play out without, yeah, getting the town.
No, I wanted to make, I wanted to make it known that I have been in touch with some of the Board members of SBC. I also have been in touch with Ray Ovachowski, the lawyer who originally was on chapter eleven, or chapter seven, by chapter it was. And everyone's in favor of potentially forming a group and potentially buy it if the town cannot, but I understand where you guys are at. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I said what I said, and I can pass the time. Thanks for hearing me.
That's great. It's a great asset. Thank you for your call. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I'm going to enter the next caller, caller ending in two two seven. You've been entered into the Bennington Select Board Meeting, Public Comment Section. We have a number of other guests that are in this, in this Zoom call at this point. If you're wondering why there's so many people, but we do welcome your presence. Please take this moment to un, turn the volume down on your computer or your television, whatever you're watching the program on, and we will unmute you and enter you into the call. So caller ending in two two seven, welcome to the Bennington Select Board. Please tell us your name, where you live, and what's on your mind.
Hi, yes, my name is Monique Janelle. I live in Bennington, and I'm going to speak to the topic as my husband Peter just did, on behalf of my neighbor Becky Amis, who unfortunately wasn't able to attend tonight's meeting. So I will be reading her letter that speaks to the group that is looking into the purchase of the Everett Estate. So I'll begin her letter now. I am Becky Amis, a resident of Bennington. I have lived here a total of thirty-seven years. In this time, I have seen a prosperous Bennington, and sadly, more recently, have witnessed the town in decline with vacant storefronts and closed manufacturing businesses. I appreciate the efforts of those trying to reverse that trend with projects such as the Putnam Block redevelopment. What could be more complimentary to this Putnam project than the purchase by the town of Bennington of the Everett Mansion and the surrounding buildings? This purchase would preserve an historic property while giving Bennington residents access to a large gym, the Bats Trails, and playing fields that are sorely lacking in this community. There are also many opportunities to use the property as a concert venue, wedding venue, sports camp venue, et cetera. The benefit to the community from bringing events to the area would be manifold. With an investment in the Everett property, we could see the revitalization of downtown that we all wish for. Here are a couple of examples of venues that have successfully brought revenue to their town.
Monique, I'm going to interrupt you just for a minute. Is this letter just about through? We have a number of people we have to get through here in the next five minutes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's basically the gist of it. You know, Becky just gave examples of two other communities that had success, Tanglewood, Manchester. So just to end the letter, while these two places did not start out earning this kind of money, these are examples of what well-conceived and well-managed ideas can generate. We ask you to please consider keeping the gym, that is, the Everett Mansion, in the hands of the Bennington community. So thank you for hearing, thank you for hearing our concerns.
Yeah, thank you for, I'm sorry to make this sort of a somewhat abbreviated version of this, but we appreciate your concerns. We know that the neighbors have been through a lot recently. We, we are, you know, our thoughts are with you a little bit on this are very much, and we're doing everything we can under the advice of our lawyer at this point. So.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep. I'm going to invite the next caller, which is caller ending in two, two, in seven, six, seven. Caller ending in seven, six, seven, you've been entered into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. I ask you to take a moment to please turn down the volume on your, on your TV or your television so that we don't have feedback, and I'll unmute you. When I do, please give us your name, and tell us where you live, and tell us what's on your minds. So caller ending in seven, six, seven, welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please give us your name and tell us where you live, and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, this is Donnie Fosick.
Hi, Donnie.
I am a lifelong, how are you folks doing?
COVID fine, if the thing goes.
I'll be, I'll be quick. I am a lifelong resident of Bennington, also a small business owner here in town, and I'll be extremely brief and to the point, and I will echo the words of Monique Peter. As many of you know, we are faced with the big possibility of trying to acquire the former SBC campus. As you know, this location has endless possibilities with its sporting fields, the Bats area trail system, the gymnasium, the dorm facilities, and last but not least, the historic mansion itself. And with the Putnam Block and the downtown revitalization happening, the addition to the campus would put us on the map as a destination town. The possible acquirement of this campus, in my opinion, is one of Bennington's most important issues of my lifetime, and I feel most local residents would agree. Please, let's try to make this happen, folks. Thank you for your time.
Donnie, thank you so much. You do, you too, do, Monique and Peter, you do a lot for the community. You're tremendously generous and helpful, and we know that you don't take this lightly. So thank you for those thoughts. I'm sorry we can't give you more definitive answers at this juncture, but we are absolutely watching it carefully.
We totally understand, and good luck, and thanks for all you do, folks.
Okay, thanks. Have a good night.
You too. Bye.
So I'm going to admit caller ending in three, five, zero, caller ending in three, five, zero, you've been entered into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. I'd ask you to please take a moment to turn down the volume on your TV or your computer so that when I unmute you, we don't get any feedback. So caller ending in three, five, zero, welcome to the meeting, and please give us your name, and tell us, tell us what's on your mind.
This is Jackie Kelly.
Good evening, Jackie.
How are you? I want to reiterate what everybody else said very shortly, and I want you also to know that I have names, and it keeps coming every, every hour. I get three or four more names, and we're up to about a hundred and twenty people who all say the same thing. Let me know what I can do. So when, when you need help from us, please call out to us, and we will get you all the help that you want, and that's it. Thank you.
Jackie, that's music to our ears. Not enough citizens say that, and thank you very much for, for offering to help. We really appreciate that. We will sing out when the time comes, if the time comes, and we appreciate that you are respecting our delicate position in the, in the legal matter right now. So have a good evening, Jackie.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. I, I have two more callers. I'm going to cut off citizens' comment after the caller ending in oh, two, five, so I'm going to enter caller ending in four, three, nine, and then oh, two, five, and then we're going to cut off citizens' comment after that because we're over time. So caller ending in four, three, nine, we've entered you into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. It looks like you're not muted, which is great. So please give us your name, and tell us where you live, and what's on your mind. Caller ending in four, three, nine, we are open to hearing your comments. Are you with us?
Hi, Don, it's Mary.
Good evening, Mary. This is, so for the record, this is Mary Morrissey, and she is a resident of Bennington.
Yes, it's Mary. I am Mary Morrissey, a lifetime, lifelong, I'm a lifelong resident and a co-signer of the letter that was presented to all of you in your packets. For a number of years, the town of Bennington's government has talked about a revitalization plan for our community, as it has experienced some challenging times with businesses, factories, and just last year, one of our colleges closing. Some steps have been taken for revitalization in our community, and that's appreciated. Highlighted in the conversations which have taken place at Select Board Meetings and special meetings were success stories from other towns in the state of Vermont who were at different stages of their revitalization projects for their communities. The message has always been loud and clear from these successful communities' revitalization project leaders, is that a community must be willing to invest in itself. A meeting was held just a couple of years ago at the Bennington Museum. Our town and B C R C had invited St. Albans Revitalization Group to come and talk to a cross-section of business, government leaders, as well as interested citizens. Again, the message was loud and clear about investing in a property or two that was well-known or beloved in your community. Make that parcel or parcels the focal point of your revitalization plan that presents an expansion of many economic development and opportunities for your community. The historic Everett Estate is one of those properties in our community that would further enhance revitalization in our community and our region, and is truly worthy of our investment as a town. If you refer to the letter and all the folks who have spoken this evening very eloquently, this property already has many attributes, and I can assure you that there are many more in store on that property. The Everett Estate is appropriate, if appropriately developed, can be a beautiful destination point for visitors to come and once again enjoy Bennington, and for our own citizens to enjoy. I hope you'll take the time to seriously consider our request, and I thank you for that.
Representative Morrissey, thank you very much for joining us tonight. We appreciate your comments, as always. Are you, we're not, we're not going to answer any questions at this point, Mary, but if you've concluded your thoughts, I'm going to thank you for your comments and let our last caller in. Are you ready for that? Okay, I'm going to say good night, Mary. Thank you very much. And I'm going to enter the last caller for citizens' comment at this point. Caller ending in oh, two, five, you've been entered into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. You are the last caller of citizens' comment at this point. I would ask you to take a moment. Please turn down your television or your TV so that we don't have any feedback. And when I unmute you, please give us your name, tell us where you live, tell us what's on your mind, and keep your comments brief if you can, please. Thank you. Welcome caller ending in oh, two, five.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, this is Nancy White calling, another lifelong resident of Bennington. I want to remind people that some of us have been asking since January for the town to go up and look at that property. I asked at the televised town meeting on March second, what we were doing to look at the property. Stuart said the town started to look at it and stopped because it had a private buyer. That deal fell through. I don't understand why we can't go up there, get some money together, and make a bid on that property. We have every right to do that. That property is what we should be building our economic future around. That is the property that people will make Bennington a destination to come to. That is the property people will get off the bypass for. And once we get them up there, they'll come into town to shop, to eat, to drink, to stay in the motels and inns. You need to make an effort for us. The other question I have, when we get Cat TVs, okay, can we use the firehouse for a public meeting so that everybody in Bennington understands exactly the vision that we, the citizens, have for the property?
We'll see. Right now, I would say that the firehouse did not work very well for the last public meeting we did. We got through it, but it was very difficult. It involved a tremendous amount of staff time, moving the vehicles, and it had a lot of deficiencies. But I, we will continue to work on that. Nancy, this, this project, this SBC project is not just about going up and making an offer on it. It's, it's a much more complicated deal than that. We can't talk about it, as you have heard from us. There are.
But the problem, but the problem is.
Why we can't talk about it. There's also a number of other, other reasons, but it is something the staff has been very, has been very involved in and very aware of, and we are definitely on this. So.
But well, I, I go back to March, when I asked, the town stopped looking at the property. You owe it to the citizens.
Okay, thank you for your thoughts. We appreciate.
Well, wait, one last question. Why can't we go back to public meetings at the firehouse? I saw every one of you there at the meeting last week for the police station, Police Department.
Well, we'll take it under consideration, but it was a very difficult setup. It took hours. It took a lot of time moving the trucks out. It was, it was not easy. It was, it was not easy communicating. There was virtually no interaction with people offline who did not feel safe showing up in person. There are a lot of deficiencies with it. So we're, we're going to continue to work on that idea. We're going to continue to try to move meetings into a more public setting as we're able to. So I, anyway, so that's.
All right, thank you.
Rolling project. Thank you, Nancy. I'm sorry.
Yeah, bye.
Sorry for the haste. Yeah. Okay, so we have moved through citizens' comment, and I would like to thank our guests for being particularly patient tonight. It's a very, very special pleasure to welcome the incoming president of Bennington College. I'm not sure we've ever had the president of Bennington College, let alone an incoming president of Bennington College, come to our Select Board Meeting, fresh off the boat. And Ms. Walker, we are very thankful to have you here. We also have, well, maybe I'll let you introduce the rest of your crew, but let's start by just saying that on behalf of the Bennington Select Board, thank you for coming to Bennington. Thank you for taking care of the college, and thank you for making the effort to explain to us what you're doing about COVID, because we are obviously very concerned about the health of our community.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much for inviting me and us here. As you may know, I was until last year the president of New York Public Media. We had eight radio stations. So I'm very comfortable with the call-in format of this meeting, and Don, I have to say, you make a really great radio host. So in that spirit, I'm Laura Walker, and I'm a first-time caller, and I hope soon to be a long time listener. And I am deeply, deeply honored to be the eleventh president of Bennington College, a position I have held for exactly one week. So I, I'm here because I know that the Bennington community and Bennington College are deeply intertwined and mutually dependent, and there is just a magical and historical bond between the two. And I want to, I came because I want to express my commitment to supporting and deepening the college's community with, relationship with the community, and to ensuring that the college thrives as an employer and a partner with you. And one of the, you know, most important things right now that everyone is thinking about is the reopening plan and what we're doing. And so I have with me today some of the extraordinary staff members of the college who have been working hard to develop the plan with the goal to help ensure health and safety while also delivering a quintessential and transformational Bennington education. I think we have some slides to show, but let me just introduce some of the folks that are here. I, I do want to say that the reopening plan has been designed with the safety of students, staff, faculty, and of course, the surrounding community as the central goal. And we've worked with S V H C, staff, faculty, and other members of the community. And so we want to give you the opportunity to hear the plan, to, we want to be as transparent as possible and as we can be, and invite you to ask any questions you may have or express any concerns. So the people that are with me today are Oceana Wilson, who's the acting dean of the college, and she is also the head of the COVID Task Force, and she'll give an overview. With her are Natalie Basil, who's the dean of students, Brian Murphy, who's the CFO, Vice President for Finance and Administration, Dr. Randy Anselmo, Director of Health Services, and from S V H C, Dr. Trey Dotson. So I will hand it. So, I will hand it over now to Oceana. And Oceana, do you want to share the screen, or do you want to just take it from here?
I'll share the screen, and we can put up the slides if that's okay with everyone.
Ah, great. I, I've made you a co-host, Oceana, so you should have the ability to put it right up there.
Great. Is that presenting?
It's not presenting yet. There you go.
Sorry about that. Well, we're, we're very grateful to be here and to have all of your time, and, and thank you for that. I just want to quickly walk through some of the broad overview of our reopening plans, and as Laura says, just be available for, for questions and concerns. As Laura stated, really, the goal in all of our planning was the safety and health of our, our staff, faculty, students, and of course, the surrounding community. And as you hear, the specifics of the plan, I just want to state that they are in adherence with the Vermont State and Safe Healthy Return to Campus and our own college's Commitment to Shared Responsibility, which is a document all faculty, staff, and students returning to campus will sign, outline the, the requirements. So, every student, faculty, and staff will be tested. Students are going to be tested on the arrival, and then again in seven days. We'll also have asymptomatic rolling testing, this is sometimes called surveillance testing, throughout the term. We'll have all students and faculty and staff complete a daily temperature check and symptom self-screen using an app called Co-Verify. And we're, we're committed to being very transparent about the reporting on our website of the status of cases. So, for our student arrival and quarantine, we have about 50 students on campus currently. They will, they are already here, and, and we will be having more join for a total of about 520, we anticipate, this fall. So, the students that need to quarantine by the, defined by the Vermont Guidance, are going to start arriving August 19th through the 21st. The students are going to quarantine in individual houses. For our students that can quarantine at home, they will arrive on the 31st, be tested, and then tested again in seven days in. We have plans for prevention and containment, so anyone who develops a fever or becomes symptomatic will be tested and will be required to isolate while waiting test results. Our students will isolate in designated facilities on our campus until they're cleared by health officials. Staff and faculty, of course, will isolate at home. And we just had a great call with the Vermont Department of Health this morning, and we're working closely with them. They will do contact tracing. We have our director of student health promotion that will work in conjunction with them to collaborate and provide information. As I mentioned, all the, all the members of the college community will sign a Commitment of Shared Responsibilities, and that has a particular mention of adhering to the Vermont State Travel Guidelines. We will be providing some limited student shuttle service into the community. One of the most difficult things that we decided this spring was the need to close the community to our, close the campus to local walkers, and we heard a lot of disappointment, and, and we understandably were quite saddened by this, and we were very, very happy to reopen again this summer, and we want to continue to welcome members of the local community into the campus outdoor spaces and walking trails. Obviously, with all the, the good social distance and mask wearing and symptom checking. At this time, we cannot open the campus buildings, so some of the things that we typically have open to the public community, like the gallery and the library, are not, we can't currently offer that. So, we have developed what's really an adaptable plan, and we are going to be monitoring threshold measures throughout the term. And as an example, these types of measures will be cases on campus and in the local community, our availability to obtain testing and the result time, percentage of our quarantine spaces and isolation spaces for students that are available. S V M C has been an outstanding, incredible partner, and certainly, we want to be in close conversation throughout to ensure that we are not putting undue burden on their, their capacity. So, as we look at the threshold measures, we have a wide range of implementations that we can adjust. In the spring, it seemed like many of the things, it was sort of an all or nothing. You either, it was fully remote, you can either have students or not. Now, as our understanding and our, our conversations with the Health Department develop, we understand that there's, there's a wider range of nuances. So, we know that some of the things that we can adjust based on these thresholds are reduction of hours, or closing spaces, changes in our operating procedure, restriction of travel, quarantine of a specific student house, and other measures, so we can adapt in real time as we see the need to pivot. One of the, so, we know a good disaster, the wasted opportunity. So, one of the things that we're excited to announce is that we've really used this shift to remote learning to accelerate what we're already in plans, to really bring the Bennington education out to more learners locally, regionally, and around the world. And so, we've recently lost Bennington Plus, which is a really exciting suite of courses for learners at all stages of academic life. And all the courses are currently offered remotely, and Vermont High School juniors and seniors can be eligible for some dual enrollment requirements, so we can work with you as needed. So, just in summation, we have a really adaptable, flexible plan, and we have the possibility of switching to remote learning for a short-term period or many other adaptable measures. We want to keep safety and health at the heart of all our planning. We're committed to you to really provide clear and transparent communication with our community. We are of the community, we live in this community, we have children in the schools. We care deeply, and the impact of the college's plan on the community is, is a huge factor in how we think about what we can do safely for all of us. And I just want to express gratitude for all of our community partnerships and the opportunity to come here tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's, that's very helpful. Anything from Natalie, or Brian, or Trey, or Randy? That you'd like to add at this point? The board may have just one or two brief questions for you, but anything you'd like to add before we get to that point? No? Randy, I know that you are the, oh, oh, sorry, Bruce, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead. I see it now.
Yes, I, I was listening to the head of the Department of Health this, this noon time talking about testing supplies and how they may become slightly more limited as, as we move into the fall. I'm wondering what your, since there does appear to be a lot of, you know, need for testing at the college, what is your plan for accessing supplies and, and testing capability?
I can comment on that, Bruce. The testing capacity limitations are real. These are things that are based on the, the national picture. Unfortunately, we've seen this big surge in the past couple of weeks. Thankfully, it looks like some of those curves are, are, you know, downward trending at this point, but there's always a possibility that testing could get overwhelmed. We are talking to and in discussion with a number of different potential testing labs. You know, we're contracted with one now to do our limited tests. But there are other options that we do have on the back burner, so to speak. What I've also learned from talking to a lot of the testing providers is that virtually all of them are ramping up capacity. And so, hopefully, the national trend will continue to go down, but if not, there are big labs that are doing their best to ramp up their capacity.
Thank you, Randy.
Dean, go ahead.
Really briefly, how are you going to be managing large gatherings? You know, I was in college at one point in my life, and those were really fun, so how is, that's got to be really, really tough.
I can feel that one. It's something we think about quite often. What I will say is Bennington, although we are, our college students, our, our housing, our social scene is somewhat different than what you might think of, of a different college experience. We have small house communities that in normal times housed only up to about 40 students, and now in COVID time, our density gets quite smaller. We're working with students, and they know coming in that there won't be the, the opportunity to gather in the ways that they normally do, and we're working closely with them to reimagine what social life can look like, and they're very engaged with that. We will have a number of students who are choosing to be fully remote for the fall term, and so, we are committed to making sure that all of our student engagement opportunities have a virtual component to them, so that no matter where students are in the world, they can engage with the Bennington campus and the Bennington community. We had a really great example of this that happened in the spring. We have something, a music festival that we host every spring called Sun Fest, and our student group really reimagined that and put it entirely online to an Instagram platform. We see a lot of those types of activities, ways that we will really be able to meet those students where they are and the needs that they have to gather. We do know that there'll be hopefully mostly outdoors opportunities to, to engage with each other, but we'll be working with students very closely and monitoring them and giving them lots of coaching on how to navigate COVID times with us this fall.
Thank you. All the best, and good luck.
Thank you for that. You know, seeing Brian on a call always makes me want to talk about budgets, but Brian, I don't know how the college is going to afford this. It feels to me like it must be hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, to try to keep up with all this testing. Is there, is the college in a position where it's going to be able financially keep up with, with this testing throughout the year?
We are. You've got to realize that, you know, colleges by their very nature have a lot of travel involved, whether it's advancement, it's faculty going off to conferences, admissions team. All of that is basically gone to zero at this point in time. We enacted also a hiring freeze at the time of COVID striking, like most colleges. So, while the expenses are different, there are savings in other areas to offset that.
That's great. Yeah, it's, there are probably a lot of questions we could have of what happens if you do have an outbreak. We certainly read your summary and talked about housing, housing infected students in a single unit on campus, and that seems very difficult to manage, and, and thank you, I'm sure you're working with Trey and Randy on that. And appreciate the fact that you're anticipating a, a less good case, maybe worse-case scenario, if, if that comes up. I think that our community appreciates that. On a very practical note, Laura, you know, since I was in preschool, we've always driven up to the gate at Bennington College, which has never been down to my knowledge, and driven right straight through. And I don't know of anybody who's ever stopped there, except maybe a tourist or something at, at that gate. Are you going to close that gate and, and ask people to actually check in if the campus is closed to outside visitors? Is there going to be a different traffic pattern or a different way of accessing the campus by vehicle?
Oceana, you want to take that? We won't be. We, we, as I, as I said in the talk, we're still welcoming at this point, community walkers. We do have on the north Bennington entrance parking spaces for people to safely park their cars and, and take out bikes, or take out dogs, and, and walk on campus. We are asking that all visitors to campus wear masks, check in, distance appropriately. We will be allowing some admissions tours from areas designated in the Vermont Travel Zone as safe areas without quarantine. So, we allow those families to come visit, park, and do a walking tour. We don't anticipate having families outside of that, but we've made it very clear if we do, that they have to stay in their car and can drive through campus and look at the beautiful Vermont and want to come, but we really don't want them out of the vehicle at that point. Does that answer your question, Don?
Yes, it does, yeah. And, and it sounds like Bennington, Bennington has really remade itself as a very welcoming place to this community. It wasn't always that way, and, but it is now, and I think we're very grateful for the fact that, that you are so welcoming. I'm very grateful for the fact that you're making all these courses available to Bennington people. Certainly, the Kappa offerings are amazing, and, and there are many others that are, are available and, you know, without cost to many, many people in this community. So, lots of resources available, and thank you for being so generous. Thank you also for taking the time to explain to us what you're doing. We may ask you to come back if things take a turn for the worse. We hope that won't be the case, but we'd like to leave it like that. And I guess the final parting word would be Laura Walker, thank you so much for coming to Bennington. Thank you so much for bringing your expertise, and trial by fire, just jump right into it, right? Nothing to eat about this, but thank you very much for joining us, and it's a good, it's a good omen that your instincts were to come, come to us in the very beginning and tell us what your plan was. We, we appreciate that kind of communication.
Thank you, and we'll be, we can, we'll be back in a drop, if you need us, we'll be, we'll be here.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bennington College people. We'll let you sign yourselves off, and we'll, we'll keep in touch.
Thank you.
So, the next item on our agenda is a new item, and Curtis Reed, I'm sorry, you're, you're going to wait just a little bit longer. I hope, I hope that's all right, but I would like to have you back-to-back with the Citizens Advisory Committee Protocol. The, the next item is, is going to be a, a brief update on the Bennington Battle Day Celebration, and this is very important, because Bennington Battle Day Celebration happens in August, and everybody needs to know about it. And if there's anything you need to know about Bennington Battle Day, or, or Bennington, or battles for that matter, the, the person to go to around here is Jonas Pivak, and he is with us tonight, and we are so glad to have you. I mean, take a look at his background, seriously. Take a look at his background material. So, he's, he's, he's all over this stuff. But I'd like to say, thanks Sarah Perrin and Mike Cutler for being part of the, the group that is working on this. I know that you two have worked very hard on that. We appreciate your engagement. But at this point, I guess I'd turn it over to you, Joan, and ask for a kind of a, a little bit of a brief update on, on what people can expect for Battle Day.
I'll start by saying thank you for that very kind introduction. And I'm a bit sorry that Laura Walker's not here for this, because of course, Bennington College also has a deep connection to our Battle of Bennington and its celebrations. And in fact, the last really big celebration back in 1927, so think 2027, we're due for another big one, but that one was really orchestrated in great part due to Mary Sanford and Helen Stokes, two very esteemed founders of Bennington College, who brought John Spargo here to Bennington. And he, of course, being an avid patriot, planned the 1927 celebrations where over 100,000 people came to Bennington to celebrate the Battle of Bennington that year. So, Laura, if you hear about this, I hope you do, and I look forward to the college's continuing participation in 20, for our 250th, which is only seven years away. But that really brings us back to what do you do in a year when you have a pandemic going on, and you have a tradition, a local tradition, of celebrating this extraordinary battle every year since it happened in 1777? That's 243 years we've been celebrating this battle here in Bennington as a community, and dang, if we're going to let a little thing like a pandemic stop us from celebrating it this year. So, it's really I among many, Sarah Perrin on the Select Board, being our voice there. So many people have come together to put together some kind of a celebration for 2020. And the main story coming out of this is that we have had to be flexible. Every week, the story changes, the guidelines change. So, part of the goal of this committee, and it's a large committee, over 17 people that have come together to plan this, half the time, we're just trying to figure out what is coming down the pipe next. And actually, one great example of that is our partners at the state who control our Bennington Battle Monument site. This specifically, locally, that's Mary Lou Chakoti, and her direct supervisor, that's Tracy Martin. They have been wonderful. They have been actively involved in our planning committee since day one. And originally, our hope was to have a ceremony at the monument, of course, right? Uh, and, and originally, our hope was to have a ceremony at the monument, of course, right? Uh, but as a result of following these uh evolving and changing situation with the pandemic, unfortunately, that's not possible. There's simply no events being planned at any Vermont uh state historic site. Uh, and we had a very sad meeting two weeks ago, highly emotional, where we had Tracy Martin, uh you know, so emotional, speaking to us about how sorry she was that we couldn't, that that could not be the location for our ceremony. Uh, but having said that, they've been wonderful partners. Instead, we are going to be having a ceremony. It will be at the Vermont Veterans Home, which we feel is an equally valuable and important site. So we're very happy about that. Uh, and at this point, I should maybe pause. And I don't know if Mike Cutler is paying attention at this point, but I think he had planned that we were going to uh play a bit of a public service announcement we had created a couple of weeks ago at the Vermont Veterans Home. And I don't know, Mike, if you're listening, is that something you wanted to do? Or do you want me to just sort of go over it? I see he's unmuted, so I'll let him speak.
Uh, it's totally up to you, Jonah. This is your time. It, the video's ready to go if you want, but totally up to you.
Uh, it's a couple of minutes. It was your idea. I think it's a great idea. Go ahead and roll it. It's got one of my favorite stars in it and and that being Colonial Man.
All right, we'll roll the tape then.
Okay, select board, we will be off the air for a minute while he rolls this, and then he'll let us know when we come back on.
We're here today at the Vermont Veterans Home to talk to the co-chairs of the twenty twenty Bennington Battle Day Parade Committee. And I wanted to know, and you want to know at home, what's going to happen. So I've got Jonas Spivak and Phil Holland with us, and they're going to go through the motion.
Well, first of all, Colonial Man, it's so good to see you out here today. I really appreciate it. Uh, it's a unique year by the fact that we start off wearing masks. Since we are outside, though, I'm going to take mine off right now. Uh, as you know, two hundred and forty-three years ago, something amazing happened here in Bennington. A local history became national history, became international history at the Battle of Bennington, where through our American victory, we really set the stage for the American Revolution's success. So this is something we've been celebrating every single year since, starting in seventeen seventy-eight. That's two hundred and forty-three years of celebrations. We can't stop now. We can't let something like a pandemic, COVID nineteen, stop us from celebrating this amazing history we have here. So we have done some things differently. Uh, Phil, you want to start us off?
We faced adversity then in seventeen seventy-seven. We rose to the occasion. We're doing our best to do it again. And we are celebrating our fortitude, patience, everything we've been through as part of our ceremony.
So we did not have a fireworks this year at Fourth of July, but we will have some fireworks this year for uh the Battle Day weekend, which is sort of unusual for us. So to kick off this new COVID socially distant celebration, Saturday night, August fifteenth, there will be an aerial fireworks display. Now, what is different is we will not be divulging the location where these fireworks are. In fact, we don't want you to go anywhere to see them. We want you to look to the sky from where you are. And you will be able to enjoy this aerial fireworks display from wherever you're located in Bennington. So this is on purpose. Please do not attempt to go anywhere to see this. Enjoy it from the comfort of your backyard or your favorite hilltop or wherever you might want to do that.
On Battle Day proper, at eleven o'clock or soon thereafter, we're going to have a ceremony right here. And our celebration, our commemoration this year, we thought, well, let's honor some of the essential workers that Governor Scott designated back on March twenty-fourth, that have had to report for work and bear the burden, take the risks for all of us. He named eighteen categories of such workers. We're going to have them all represented by local people here uh in the morning. The governor will honor them. We're going to start out, though, with some students from our local schools who have studied the Battle of Bennington in school. They'll be reminding us of what happened and why it was important. The governor will speak. And back in seventeen seventy-eight, we had a poet speaking at the ceremony. We'll have our local Mary Ruffel, poet laureate of Vermont, do a couple of poems for us for the occasion.
Now, this ceremony, because of COVID nineteen, will be televised right here on CAT TV. And actually, we are encouraging you not to come see it in person. This is really important. And it's not because we don't love you all. We love you all. But because in order to stay in compliance with our guidelines, we're going to ask you to see the ceremony, tune in to CAT TV. That's where you're going to see the ceremony. Yeah.
Lovely.
And I should also mention that while the ceremony is going in, there is something that you could participate in. If you feel the need, like many of us, that, that some kind of a parade is so much part of a Battle Day, we have an option for you. And in fact, I'm wearing my Bennington Fire Department hat today, partly in honor of the tradition that this uh that our fire department for the last fifty-four years has been running our parade, a fabulous big parade. They're helping this committee, this group, again this year with a reverse parade. This is becoming kind of a thing with the pandemic. This is the parade where you do not go to watch it. You participate by getting in your own vehicle and becoming a part of the parade. If you would like to be a part of the reverse parade, you can sign up by go to bennington.com slash battleday, all lowercase. There's a signup form there, and we'll also be promoting this on social media. Now, we will be publicizing the route at some point. And if you happen to live along the route, then we encourage you to put your seventy-six flag out, decorate if you want to, have your immediate family gather on your porch to watch us go by. But what we don't want is anyone to gather for this, so don't have your friends get together. Uh, if you really want to be part of it and you don't live along the route, join us with your vehicles, sign up to be part of the reverse parade. And I might mention, the entire parade will be televised where?
On, on CAT TV, right there. Now, what, I hear they'll be right here at the end of the route, capturing it all. And where does the parade start?
The parade is going to be starting uh at the southwestern Vermont Hospital. And there are instructions on where to park, to line up, if you do want to sign up for the reverse parade. So you'll be able to get that information online. But the idea is this reverse parade route is going to be traveling by many of the locations that represent our essential workers. So the hospital being such an important part of our community, such an essential part, uh is really the first location that we're going to honor as part of this parade.
And uh, any special guests we'll hear this year besides the governor, or is that, is that it? People will have to wait and see, or?
We've pretty much limited it to that for this year, uh but we may have a few surprises. Uh, for example, uh at approximately twelve fifteen, uh there will be a flyover of uh, am I allowed to say this, Phil?
I think so.
Yeah.
Or we could just keep it a surprise.
Yeah. Well.
Some sort of a flyover at twelve fifteen, folks.
Some kind of a flyover at twelve fifteen. Uh, it'll be something that, again, you'll be able to enjoy from your house. Uh, you can simply look to the sky from where you are.
Look to CAT TV. That's what we really want you to do.
Absolutely. Tune in to CAT TV for that as well. So we will, we will be having a special guest in that respect.
Excellent. Well, anything else you guys want to cover? It sounds like a, in, in this pandemic world we're in, it sounds like it's, you're making the best of it as, as best you can to make a nice celebration of Battle Day.
Well, I guess I would just comment that uh this is, we're all citizens, we're all volunteers to make this happen. We're partnering with our, our very own Bennington Fire Department, our police department, our town officials. Uh, this is community coming together to honor a celebration that we've done every single year since seventeen seventy-seven.
Well said, Jonah.
And we are not going to let that tradition die.
Excellent. I think we end on that. Then tune in, folks, August fifteenth and August sixteenth. We'll see you then.
Thank you, Colonial Man.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you for that, Jonah. That's great. I don't know how Colonial Man knows what a flyover is. Uh, we think it might be something that holds up his pants, but uh, but obviously, that's not the case either from the video. So um, thank you for sharing that with us. Did you give us a brief summary of what, what we can look forward to?
Yep. And for the listeners, uh as that was playing, the select board actually wasn't able to view that. So my apologies for that. I didn't quite realize that dynamic when we had this brilliant idea. Uh, so I'll just quickly note that uh the celebrations, so this is a little bit reiterated, but the celebrations really start on Saturday. That's August fifteenth. Uh, there will be, and actually, some of this is new. Didn't show up on the PSA, so this is new information. Uh, there will be a, a Nineteenth Amendment, hundredth anniversary of the uh, of women's suffrage, which there'll be a presentation at the Carriage House. It's in conjunction with both the Old First Church and the Bennington Battle Monument. That's one of the event that they're holding, although it can't be right on their property. Uh, likewise, at three thirty, starting from the monument, there'll be a walking tour, a revolutionary walking tour of Old Bennington at three thirty. Uh, and of course, Saturday night, uh we didn't give a time in the PSA, but at nine thirty PM, that's when those fireworks, all aerial displays, they will be happening. Uh, we want you to watch them from your backyard, watch them from where you are. Do not go anywhere to watch them. Uh, if Willow Park will literally be closed and locked down. Do not go there. Uh, the fireworks will be launched from an undisclosed location, so I had to say that. Uh, and actually, I did want to mention about the reverse parade, and this is really important, uh that one thing that we usually have in a parade is marching bands. It's so much a part of parades. How do you do that in a virtual parade, in a reverse parade? Uh, we came up with a new idea. Basically, we asked Lynn Sweet, who's the music director at the high school. Many of you know her. Uh, she has provided us with a playlist that will be played and broadcast via WBTN. So our idea is that everyone in the reverse parade, tune your radios to WBTN for the duration of the parade, and we'll have that playlist from Lynn Sweet, uh playing from all those vehicles. So that will be our virtual way to sort of recreate the marching band uh idea. And of course, a lot of those tracks will be from Mount Anthony students. So we're very excited about having that as well. Uh, so one of the things I wanted to ask the select board is if you had any thoughts or questions. And I do think it's fair to say that the town has been wonderful about supporting this uh effort, uh as has the police department, and a very special thank you to none other but our Bennington Fire Department. Uh, this fire department has been really leading our celebrations for over the past fifty years, extraordinary. And this year, even though we're doing a completely different sort of a celebration, they are very deeply involved, especially with that reverse parade. They are our parade experts. Uh, so even though they weren't able to host the traditional big parade that we're used to seeing, uh they've been very much involved from day one. We're just so grateful to them. So any thoughts or questions from the select board?
I think it sounds like it's going to be a very fun COVID uh alternative. And I'm so grateful that we are not letting a Bennington Battle Day pass by uncelebrated. So thank you, Jonah. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Colonial Man, AKA Mike Cutler, uh for, and everybody else who's worked on this. Thank you so much for being part of this. I do think um you will have a very good showing from the select board. I am so sorry that I can't be there for, for um personal reasons. I will not be able to, I will not be in, able to come, but I will totally be there in spirit. And I know a number of.
Watch it on CAT TV.
So, yeah, yeah. Great. Jonah, thank you so much for joining us and uh for the fun and informative update. Have a good evening. Curtis Reed, among the most patient men uh in uh southern Vermont, maybe in New England at this point. Thank you very much for sticking with us. I'm going to slow the pace down just a little bit at this point. I um, we, uh, we have other business on our agenda, but it, it's, it's all internal from this point out. So you're the last guest uh to whom we feel somewhat obliged to try to stay on schedule, even though I will try to keep us somewhat on schedule. But I would like to slow things down a little bit and um make sure that you feel like you have plenty of time to uh present what you're presenting and to um have the board participate in whatever way is meaningful. So I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, and thanks to the entire select board. Uh, I'm just going to give you an update of the work that we've been doing. Complete with kudos, uh along the way, but we have um so I'm, I'm just, start for those of you who were not present uh with just a little brief story uh about the well digger. And I won't go into excruciating details about how I ended up on a s- sand dune in the middle of the Sahara Desert. But the uh takeaway from a conversation I had with Well Digger was you, you can't dig an old well, or you can't dig a new well by digging an old well deeper. So you can't dig a new well by digging an old well deeper. And as I look at Bennington and the decisions that the select board has made, you've clearly decided that you don't want to dig deeper into an old well that will likely not produce any, any water. But that you've broken ground on, on a new well that uh in, in the process of creating much more trust between residents, town government, uh and the police department. So the um, so uh, uh to this point, we've, we've done a training with this, with the uh, uh select board and town manager, assistant town manager, police chief and lieutenant uh back on July fourteenth and fifteenth. And the, the greatest takeaway from that encounter was the, the day after Cam came up to me and he said, you know, I had not thought about the way that we do traffic stops. And you shared with, with us, you know, how you train state police in, in doing their traffic stops. I got my vehicle and I did traffic duty on, on Friday. And I did it exactly the way you told me, or you told us in the group. And he said, it was just a phenomenal experience at the change in comportment of the motorist. When you identify yourself straight up, tell exactly why you pulled him over. And then you asked the question, is there a reason for that? Because that question allow, allows the motorist to tell you that, well, my partner's water just broke and I'm trying to make it to the hospital, or a winged end up trying because my cat of thirty-five years died and I wasn't really paying attention. Or so you, you just said that there was a qualitative difference in his relationship with the motorist that he learned, you know, out of that, out of that training. I spoke at the uh, you know, sort of one of the change shifts, shift changes uh at the police department. And I'm looking forward to going back there and spending more time with them. But the, the, the height, the highlight of, uh, you know, for me is that, wow, somebody listened to what I said. They put it into practice and lo and behold, you know, it was uh, they found it incredibly useful. So on July twentieth, well, actually, on July thirteenth, we began um interviewing for the two uh community research teams. We had fifteen candidates and six slots. Um, and it was pretty tough at the end to decide. You know, we, we had in some ways a small embarrassment of riches. Um, but we did choose uh three for the community policing team, uh and that was Karen Loosa, Robert Ebert, uh and Enzo Lee. And then the research team for the civilian oversight of law enforcement. We had Alana Hart, Katie Berger, or Berger, uh and Joe Holt. And I have to say that um they just turned in their um, their online, online bibliographies. Uh, we gave them a pretty wide berth uh in terms of where and how to look. There's a, the only sort of parameter in terms of time was, I said ten years, but then one of the teams came back and said, well, there's, there's some really good material uh fifteen and twenty years ago. And I said, well, include it. So on the community policing bibliography, there are um twenty-six references. And on the uh citizens oversight, there were forty-six. I'm waiting to receive all the interviews um back. The uh, some of the teams, the community policing team interviewed the chiefs for the town of Brattleboro, Chief Mike Fitzgerald. for the town of Brattleboro, Chief Mike Fitzgerald, in Hartford, Phil Caston, in Rutland, Brian Cullen, and in Burlington, Jennifer Morrison. And the community policing team interviewed those, those chiefs to really get a sense of the, um, what did it take to actually implement, uh, community policing? Whether it was done all at once, or if it was done at stages. I mean, there's some fascinating, um, information out of those, out of those, those interviews. And out of the bibliographies, for example, uh, under civilian oversight, they found an application form. You know, if you want to be a member of a civilian review board or citizens review, there are like applications, there are, there's academic research on them. We're really thankful they had conversations with, um, Julio Thompson, who is a civil rights attorney within the Attorney General's office. He has a different civil rights division. There's also a, he might not say this, but I would say that he's a national expert on, on, um, civilian oversight. The, um, so I have, we're in the final stages of sort of formatting this material. And it will be uploaded online on August seventeenth. And I might mention that the other things that are already uploaded to the, to the town website is the PowerPoint, PowerPoints, one from the training with, uh, the select board. And from the, um, oh, is that up yet? I don't know if the second one is up. This is the one about the, uh, from the August fifth.
It's not, we're heading out.
Yeah, that's not up yet. Okay. All right. So the August fifth community gathering, looking at vision and mission, I would have to say out of the blocks that technology was not our best friend that evening. Don did a fantastic job with the limits that we were working with. But, you know, the, the, the sort of hybrid, sort of in-person along with Zoom technology and cat TV all combined together was, was somewhat challenging. But we, we made it through the evening and there were two points at which I was humbled by the quality of work. And that was, when we finished with the vision statement for the town, there was this spontaneous applause. I had not at all anticipated that. But it was very clear, because I typically, before these community gatherings, I usually walk around and talk to people and try to find out where they are and who they are, what they do in the town. And there were clearly folks that were, um, unhappy with, with the town. And, and the way this process, you know, unrolled or rolled out or didn't roll out in the way that they thought it would be. But there were some of the most enthusiastic clappers at the end of the vision process, as well as of admission for the police department. The, it, it's really important to note that this is a deliberative process, that it's not piecemeal or gerrymandered in some form or fashion. And I think it was really important to convey that to the audience, to residents that, that were present. Because some of them felt that the training had already left the station, but it hadn't. I was really impressed with the level of participation on the part of, of residents. You know, and, you know, particularly the, the, um, the contributions that were made by Berlantonians of color that, um, Benettonians, not Berlantonians, but Benettonians of, of color, uh, who, who attended. There was, uh, the, the only other sort of technical thing that happened was, at one point, there was too much carbon monoxide in the room from all the hot air that we had. And it, it triggered the exhaust fan, which, which sort of was another sort of barrier that we had to overcome. But again, you know, I thought it was a, uh, we were really successful at mining, uh, community wisdom. And that that wisdom is clearly apparent in both of the statements that were, that were, that were, that were crafted. So next steps in terms of a, of a timeline. One, on the seventeenth of August, we will, um, you know, upload the bibliographies. And I, and I might also add that when that gets uploaded, it will put Bennington in a, in a very different light relative to all the other Vermont towns. Because that'd be a resource that would be available to all towns across, across the, uh, across the state. And, you know, Bennington is stepping out and saying, this is the beginning of our new well. And that there is, there's a, you know, that, that's a manifestation of sort of moving in a, in a different direction. There's a, uh, there's another piece to this that, uh, when we look at civilian oversight, that this is a topic that will likely be taken up either out of the executive branch or the legislative branch this fall. So inasmuch as there's a considerable amount of work that's been done, I would recommend to the select board not to take up the issue of citizen review until after, um, the legislative session has, has started and that this topic has, has come up. But it is, it, it doesn't negate the research that has been done. It will be, um, in large measure, an opportunity for residents of the town to see what's out there and what the different models are, or, you know, or the academic studies that are been done around both civil, civilian oversight as well as community policing. And it's really important to know that this was, um, vetted through the eyes of residents and of a multi-racial, uh, intergenerational, uh, group. You know, we had some folks with gray hair and we had some couple college students. We had a black resident and, and an Asian resident. We had women and men. So, you know, there's, it is a, a microcosm of Bennington. And the only, um, I've gone through, I went through all of the, all of the, the citations and felt compelled to pull just one. And I pulled that one because it did not add significantly to, uh, other work that was already there. And so I made the argument that that might be one that we should pull, pull out because it, it really didn't add anything. And then we want this to be as useful as possible without sort of duplicating, um, information. There's also in this group of, uh, you know, articles about, you know, work that's been done in other towns in, in the state of Vermont. The good, the bad, the ugly, the indifferent, um, sort of that's available. So in terms of the timeline, this all gets uploaded on the seventeenth. The following week, somewhere towards the end of the, end of the, uh, month, we're recommending to upload, uh, policy documents. That the next phase is really looking at discrete policies, um, that were recommended for, um, revision by the I A C P. And that that process will start with, uh, sort of, and there's already sort of research that's been done on the various models that are out there. There are only a limited number of places that, um, have model policies, um, for law enforcement. And, uh, those have been, have been gathered, have been gathered together. And will be uploaded, uh, onto the, onto the, um, town website so that residents, uh, will have a look at them to see, you know, compare and contrast, uh, these policies. And then we'll create a, uh, policy review group or, or task force that will have, uh, sort of three permanent members, uh, one representative from the police department. One will be, I think, Dan. And then, uh, one of the members of the Oversight Committee for the, uh, for this work. Uh, one of the teams, I think Bruce, I think Bruce, can we volunteer you?
Yes. Yeah, I've already been volunteered.
Okay, thank you.
And happily.
Great. Uh, and then there'll be four, uh, community members that will, will be part of your group, and those, those will be selected, uh, in, in due course. But it'll be a different group depending on what the policy is. So, you know, use of force or, uh, you know, would be the one that we most likely start with. So residents that are mostly impacted by use of force would be on that committee. But sort of the institutional memory will be you, please, and, um, and, and Dan. That moves through all, uh, of the five or six, um, uh, policy discussions. That will, that work will begin in September and will likely take, you know, six, seven, eight weeks. During which time we'll, we'll have our, our cues from the legislature or from the, the executive office as to how we would then approach, uh, civilian oversight of law enforcement. And so that's, that's where we are right now. And, uh, I'll, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Curtis, for the summary. Did, did you want to read any of the, um, did you want to take an opportunity to read either the mission or the, uh, either of the work products that came out of that meeting? Or was that later?
I can do that. I, I need to pull it up.
Jean, I see you have your hand up. Curtis is involved in the, in, in pulling up some of the work that came out of that community meeting. Would you like to go ahead and start formatting the question while he's working?
Yeah, I, I have it up now.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Curtis.
So the, uh, revised vision for the town is, Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, and resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Right. So that's our vision of where we, where we want to be and, and our, um,
Right. That's the vision that this is.
Acknowledgement that we're not there yet, that we have, we have a ways to go. We have some more wells to dig.
Yes. Um, and then the revised mission, um, for the police department is the Bennington Police Department is accountable to the community for providing everyone, regardless of identity, with respectful, equitable law enforcement, law enforcement protection and service. We will achieve this through collaborative and positive relationships which contribute to the betterment of our quality of life.
Thank you for reading those. That, that second one in particular, by the time we got to it, the CO2 evacuation fans had gone off and our technology was really beginning to fail. There could be some wordsmithing, some minor, uh, grammatical changes to that. I think that the speaker was pretty clear. I see you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Um, I have just three kind of short questions. Um, I'm assuming as far as the bibliography, it'll be on the town website on August seventeenth. Do you want me to facilitate those, the bibliography to be on the two library websites as well?
Yes.
Okay. And is there going to be some sort of a public presentation of the researchers' work? Or is it just gonna be an announcement that they're there on the website?
Uh, I think it'll just be an announcement. Two of the researchers are going back to college. So, and then one is probably starting school, who's a school teacher. And then, so, yeah, there's, I, I think there's enough, uh, we can bang the drum on social media, uh, to drive people to the, to the information, to, to the bibliographies.
The last question is, as far as, um, for the policy task forces for each policy, do you see yourself being involved in the selection of those people? Or is that something that we can handle internally without your help?
Let me get back to you on that.
Okay.
Okay? Um, because there, there are, um, certain financial considerations in that. And then, uh, I, I sort of hoped that the way in which we did the selection for the community teams, that that could be replicated. However, if, if you need me to be there, I, I can be there. So, yeah, let's, we can talk about that at, at, you know, offline at some point. But I am available. Um, I, I thought that the process that brought us the, the teams were great. But if you need to have that other perspective, because I know there were a couple of times when we had, after our, our interviews where, you know, there was sort of an aha moment of, oh, I, I didn't quite see it that way. Or, wow, I didn't think about this particular dimension of, of, uh, of the response. So, um, yeah, if, if you want me to be there, I will certainly be there.
I'm gonna break in just for a minute. I'm sorry about this, Curtis. I've, I've slackened my duties. But I need to, um, put out the call-in information. Uh, if there's anybody that has comments or questions about, um, this agenda item, you are welcome to call six four six five five eight eight six five six and use the meeting ID eight five six five four nine eight four five four nine and press the pound sign when prompted. Apologize for not having put that up sooner, but we did get it at the beginning of the meeting. And if you have comments, do, uh, do call in now, please, so that we can get you in a queue. The calls are answered in the order that they come in. So Jeanie, you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Hi. So I'm hoping that sometime, uh, in the next, in the next ten minutes, uh, that we as a board can, um, uh, can, I guess, officially accept the vision statement for the town of Bennington. You know, I think the, 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 uh, the mission statement for the police department, I think we should hold till, to the next meeting. But I would love for us to be able to, uh, vote to accept this vision statement for the town of Bennington.
I think that sounds like a great idea. It's, uh, it's so infrequently that we get to take something the community has generated and, and voted on it afterwards. And that is a nice, nice thing you've brought to us. and, and voted on it afterwards, and that is a nice, nice thing you've brought to us here Curtis. I think, um, for whatever reason, Jim Carroll fell out of the meeting, so I think he, uh, is gone. So let's give him just a minute to see if he can get back into the meeting before we take any, any votes on that. But, uh, feels to me like that's something community-generated, uh, very consistent, but maybe, um, amplified from what the select board came up with, with the staff. And feels to me like there's no reason why we shouldn't enthusiastically, uh, think about it. Although I, I do have two hands up, so maybe I have spoken a little soon on that. I'm gonna go Sarah and then Stuart, actually Sarah, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go Stuart and then Sarah. Stuart isn't using the hand icon, he's using the old fashioned hand. Go ahead Stuart.
May I suggest that since this is really the first time that the, those people who are watching CAT TV and watching our meeting have heard the vision statement, that would it not be helpful to wait another two weeks and see what comments and questions we might get on it before the board takes an action to, to put it into concrete?
Good thoughts. Here comes Jim. Back in the meeting, there he is, and then get some, get some new wifi. So Jim, welcome back in. We, uh, there just was a discussion about the community-generated vision statement, whether or not we should try to approve it at, at this meeting, or whether we should, uh, enjoy sitting on it for a couple of weeks and, and take it up at our next meeting after we've had a chance to talk to, other citizens about it. Do you have any preference on that?
No, I'll, I'll follow the board's, uh, recommendations on this. I think, uh, we're all of the same mind.
Okay, um, thanks for rejoining us. We'll, uh, go to Sarah next and then Bruce please.
Yes, I just wanted to have someone reiterate that for me and for everyone else at home.
I'm sorry, reiterate what?
Mission statement.
Oh.
The vision statement.
I said, I'm sorry, I don't have it to put up on the screen, but, uh, we, maybe Curtis, if you wouldn't mind reading the vision statement again. Uh, let's just focus on that for now, since I'm not sure if the other one has, has been, you know, grammatically looked at, I'm not sure we've had all the different partners look at it. But let, if you've got the vision statement-
Well, if you, if you, let me, I, I can just post it on the screen.
Okay, uh, let me make you a co-host, hang on just a second here.
Okay.
Just take a second. Okay, you should be able to go through share screen and then pick your document.
Okay.
So Sarah, was that, that, was that the note of your question is, is to hear the vision statement, uh, read again and to see it? Okay. Okay, so we're looking at the PowerPoint that you used in the, uh, in the meeting Curtis, but this is the one that you were editing in, in real time as the meeting went on, right?
Right. It was actually, it was Kara, we had to, with the fast fingers.
So, um... Yeah, so everyone can read this, but Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, and resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life. Thank you Curtis for sharing that, and thank you Sarah for asking about that. Sarah, do you have any more? Is there any more to your question, can, may I move on to Bruce at this point?
I'm off that, thank you.
Okay, go ahead Bruce.
Hey, so I'm sort of, um, torn with this one because I actually do think it would be helpful for the community to see it, um, maybe to have it published on our website as a, as a, as what is coming, be coming up for the twenty-fourth. I'm, I was one of those enthusiastic plotters, uh, at the meeting on the fourth, or fifth rather, and, uh, will support whatever the board decides, but I really, um, in general, these sorts of things, I really like to give them a two-week, a two-meeting, uh, hearing just so that, but I, you know, if the rest of the board wants to go tonight, that's fine, but I, I'd really love the community to have a chance to see it and have it up printed. We have not done that with everything yet. Uh, we have it.
So Curtis, I guess I'm gonna ask you to put that, uh, to stop sharing that at this point, if you would please.
Oh, okay.
And, um... Let's see, I have a caller in the waiting room. Board of, any other questions? Let's see, your hand is down, Bruce. Any other questions from the board at this point? Okay, I have a caller in the waiting room that I'd like to admit, if, if you're ready for that Curtis, are you?
Sure.
Are you getting ready for some public comment here?
Okay.
So, uh, caller ending in one nine six, um, I've entered you into the meeting, uh, caller ending in one nine six, and I'd ask you to please take a moment to turn down the volume on your TV or your computer. And when I unmute you momentarily, uh, please give us your name and tell us where you're from and, uh, tell us what's on your mind. Caller ending in one nine six, welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting.
Thank you, my name is Mike Russell, I'm from Bennington.
Good evening Mike.
How you doing? I think you ought to listen to what Stuart said, I think this is, personally, my own opinion, is very unfair to the community the way you're rushing things through every week, giving everybody else a talk, a chance to talk about something that's really not important to the average person of Bennington. I also think the police department should have representation at that last meeting, the first open meeting with Mr. Curtis Reed. Yeah, I'm hearing a lot from the community, they're not happy with this at all, so. You ought to put it off for a while, I don't know what type of resolution you're doing here, but, uh, it's not fair to the police department. One other comment too, I said it to a few of you people, but I think the, uh, all lives, all Black Lives Matter, whatever it's gonna be called, sign or whatever you call it, is a little unfair too, there should be something honoring our police department in honoring all lives in our community.
Okay Mike, well, thank you for that, and I, I would say we are, yes, bouncing back and forth on whether or not this is something we look to, or, or look at in the future. I think your comments are, uh-
Hey, can somebody please break down, why did this cost us sixty-six thousand plus eight, two thousand, or the twenty-six or seven thousand? Where did all that money go? And that was taxpayer dollars, correct?
Well, the, um, Jeanie, it looks like you put your hand up quickly on that one. I don't know if you want to answer that, but the sixty-six thousand was the I A C P report, which we hired out, that was a competitive process. We, we looked at a lot of different, uh, proposals on that, we went through a very, uh, this is how we met Curtis, we, we felt unqualified to figure out which of the proposals was gonna be best for the community. So he took us through a fairly, um, detailed ranking process that ended up, um, leading us to the conclusion that we needed to, uh, seek the best expertise we could, that led us to I A C P. And the, uh, the other work that we're, we're now doing, uh, was supported by the Vermont Committee Foundation at the pound's request, and, um, that was an effort to be sensitive to the fact that there were taxpayer itself, that the, that the cost of the region was going on to-
And did the orig- excuse me, but didn't the original report also say that our police department was not racist?
Uh, there were, there, it did not say that in so many words, but it did say a lot of things. It did, it did say that there was, uh, no, um, evidence of traffic stop bias. It said there was no evidence of bias in our policies. But it also went on to say that there were, uh, potential areas where we could get in trouble, and especially with our policies, we needed to work really hard on-
But it di- it did not say that our police department is racist, correct?
It did not say that in that phrase, no.
You're right, well, that's the phrase that you look for. When you're accusing a police department of being something, that's the phrase that you look for. I don't believe our police department is racist, I believe our police department does the best job they can possibly do. And I'll give credit where credit's due, Mr. Hurd is in charge of the police department, and I don't want to give Hurd too much credit, but he has done a good job, I believe, with our police department. And I think this is kind of an insult to our administration, when we get a good police department and they aren't even invited to go to that last joke of a meeting, quite honestly, but-
They participated by Zoom, both the chief and lieutenant.
Did they give an opinion? Were they asked to give an opinion?
Well, they, they participated.
So how did they participate? I didn't know about it, the paper didn't cover it.
Well, Mike, it was, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, it was challenging making it available to, uh, the right number of people in that space, figuring out social distancing and also figuring-
You did, you did a fine job, CAT TV did a fine job. You're using this as an excuse. You did a fine job putting on that meeting. The police, the fire department moved the fire engines out, it can take hours. CAT TV is paid very highly by the state to cover these meetings. So you did a very, very good job. I just would like to see some policemen there, or the chief, or his second-in-command, to be able to voice their opinion.
Yeah, and we will have the police be, um, part of this, this process too, so.
Yeah, and, and then-
Go ahead, Mike, I mean, go ahead, um, Curtis.
Okay, so I sat down with the chief and lieutenant several hours beforehand and ran through the entire process and presentation, um, and they participated by Zoom. There was some information that was, um, passed along to me as we were in, in real time. But, you know, this was done with the full participation and, and knowledge of the police department. And, and, and the lieutenant.
Well, no offense here, unless they, they're clairvoyant or have ESP, I don't know how they could have put their input in when you're writing the mission statement for the town of Bennington.
May, may I jump in here Donald, if that's all right? Donald, you're muted.
Absolutely, as long as you mention the fact that, uh, you know, both, uh, the chief and the lieutenant had the whole process from the beginning.
Well, I, I think, I think it's important to note that all of us from the town government who were at the meeting, uh, other, other than the Community Development Director, did not participate because we were there to listen, and that's what the chief and the lieutenant were asked to do. We wanted to listen to the community and get the community's input to see what the community thought about these particular statements. So I, I, I don't think it was essential for the chief and lieutenant to sit in the room with us and, and, and listen, they were doing so, uh, and, uh, because the chief was communicating with me at the, during the meeting as well.
Donald, so I've got, uh, two hands up Jim, before you, um, Mike, any more from you? Or you, you said your piece?
Well, I'd like to hear what they have to say, so I can comment on their, their, respond to their comment.
Uh, well, okay, but, but make it brief please, we've got other people waiting. So, uh, in, in order is Jeanie Jenkins and then Jean and then Jim.
Right, well, this isn't originally why I had my hand up, but, um, I will say that, uh, the training that, um, that, uh, the police chief and lieutenant and Dan, Stu, and Shannon and the select board took part in, we developed a value statement at that time, which is remarkably similar to the vision statement for the town that we came up with in the end. So, um, I, I totally, I thank you for noting that our, our reason for being there and not, not everyone on the select board was there in person, um, but our reason for, uh, for-
Excuse me, Jeanie, excuse me just a second, I'm, Mike, I'm gonna mute you because we're getting feedback from your channel, so I'll unmute you after people have a chance to speak, Mike.
The, the reason that the community meeting was held was to give the community an opportunity to talk about what they saw as a vision, and the value statement that both Cam and Paul took part in was the jumping off point for thinking about what we see as a vision for our community. So, that, that's what I'll say on that.
Okay, feel free to keep your hand up if you have other comments, um, but let's go to Jeanie first and then Jim.
Yeah, I just want to really briefly, um, tell Mike and whoever else may be listening that this process is about way more than racism. It's, it's much broader than that, it's community policing, it's community oversight, it's policies, it's procedures, it is not about racism only. So I just wanted you to clarify that, um, say what you will, but that's the truth.
Thank you Jeanie, Jim?
Uh, yeah, I just want to reemphasize what, uh, both, uh, Genies, uh, said, uh, to Mike in that, Mike, we had the police chief and Cam Grandy at full participation, and as a matter of fact, when we had our, our workshop, um, uh, it was myself, Stu, and, uh, Paul Dusset who, uh, came up with a separate, but very similar, um, mission statement. So, you know, they, they were fully a part of it, um, and I just want to reassure you that, uh, they were not left out, that's it, thanks.
Okay, I think we've made this point, I'm gonna unmute Mike, I'm gonna ask you Mike for your last comments, and then I'm gonna go on to the next caller. So, Mike, I unmuted you at this point, um, last comments?
I just want to make it very clear that this study that cost us sixty-six thousand dollars did not find that our police department is racist. After the comment you made on channel CA X, I want to clarify with everybody, your comment was wrong, and our police department is not found racist by this sixty-six thousand dollar study. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mike.
Um, would you, would you put the phone numbers back up one more time?
Sure, thank you for reminding me. I'm going to share my screen now, this is the dial-in information, six four six five five eight eight six five six, meeting ID eight five six five four nine eight four five four nine. You have to press the pound sign twice, but, uh, it'll prompt you, you don't need any more codes than this. So I will, uh, leave this up just for a minute, I do want to pause just briefly acknowledging what, uh, Mike said, that I, I was filmed on CAT TV on, um, WCAX, I did, um, didn't speak as clearly and as eloquently as I should have, I never do, and I certainly don't when I'm on TV. Uh, I did write a, a letter to the banner clarifying my thoughts and really, uh, being clear about the fact that I do believe that the men and women that work for our police department are good people and that they can be part of this change. I'm completely confident in that. So I'm gonna stop sharing this now and, uh, go ahead, uh, and enter the next caller into the, into the waiting room, if that's all right Curtis, unless you have any other, okay. So I am entering a caller into the meeting now, a caller that ends in, uh, six one zero, a caller. You will be in the Bennington Select Board Meeting in just a minute. When I unmute you, I'd ask you to take a moment now to please turn down the volume on your TV or your computer so that we don't have any feedback. So caller ending in six one zero, welcome to the Select Board Meeting. Please give us your, uh, name, full name, and your, tell us where you live and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi Don, uh, Matt Maroni, I live at nine Corey Lane. I spent six years on the select board, so I know this is a little out of whack, but I'm sitting here listening to the amplification of the S V C camp, the loud noises, and it's almost like they're throwing it in our face because the judge made a ruling in their favor. Um, I, I think the town needs to do something about this. I don't know what the next step is, but it's getting ridiculous up here.
Matt, I want to just take a second and say, first of all, thanks for calling in. I know it's, it's out of sequence, but I don't care, uh, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're, you're calling and I'm so sorry that you have to put up with that, you and so many other people have to put up with that. It's infuriating, I think the legal system let us down. I'm, I'm really, really not happy with the, the judge's decision on that. But I'm gonna turn it over to, is Dan Mox still on the call? I'm gonna turn it over to Dan Mox, uh, the town has been pursuing- Uh, the town has been pursuing this aggressively and, uh, within the limits of our power. But Dan, would you, and, and Curtis, I apologize for this. We're a little bit more loose about things out of order because of Zoom and because it's difficult. Okay, thank you. So Dan, I'm gonna, just without too much, um, whiplash, just ask you to address, uh, Matt's comment for a minute and then we'll get back to, um, we'll get back to that Curtis Reed presentation.
Uh, can you hear me, Donald?
We can. You're a little, you're a little garbled. Uh, speak slowly, I'd say. And, and Matt, can you hear him okay?
Yes, yeah, I got him.
Okay.
Okay, um, so just, just, uh, to clarify for everybody, the only power we have with regard to the noise issue up there is the power that the judge grants to us. So we can't, you know, go up there and seize equipment or arrest folks or, or do anything like that. Unfortunately, we have to rely on what the court order gives us the authority to do. That being said, if, you know, given that this behavior is continuing, we'll just, we will be filing another, I'm sure, I'm gonna talk to my, our attorney tomorrow, but we'll probably file another contempt, motion for contempt, uh, tomorrow and hope that the judge finally sees that this is a real issue and it is, it's a real, very real impact on the neighbors to the college. Uh, but again, we, no matter how much our police want to do up at the college with regard to these noise complaints, they are limited by what the judge allows us to do in a court order. So we will continue to go back to court, uh, and, uh, hope, hope that we get a better result this time. Um, you know, I would hope that the judge's patience has run out, but.
Dan, to be clear, that, that all has to be based on, on evidence and has to be based on facts. So if people stop filing police reports, if people stop, uh, going through the right, the correct channels and the plates, then there won't be another, there won't be, uh, material for another filing, right? So people should continue to, uh, file formal police reports. Is that, is that correct, Dan?
That's correct. We'll need, we'll need the, the complaints to, uh, to build evidence, uh, for the continuing problem. And, uh, we might also expand at the next hearing. We may bring in more neighbors to testify. Uh, we thought that having several police officers and one neighbor was sufficient. Maybe this time we'll bring in more neighbors to testify. But, um, again, we will rely on our legal counsel to chart a way forward on this particular matter. But we are limited by what the court allows us to do or orders, uh, allows us to do in their court orders.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
Um, Matt called me and alerted me about this, uh, during the meeting. That's why I left the meeting. And what I told him, and I'll tell any, any other, uh, resident who's listening, um, if you're a neighbor of SBC, our only ammunition is complaints that are filed with the police department. So those people that are, you know, being bothered and harassed essentially by, uh, this noise, and that's what it is, it's harassment. They need to file a complaint with the police, police department. And I wanna give that number to the, uh, police department. The number is four four two ten thirty. That's our only ammunition. And that's what we bring to the court, um, uh, when we, when we file a le- legal action. That's what we need.
Okay, so Matt, I, I'm gonna just again apologize for the disruption to your family life and, and to your peaceful enjoyment of your property. And, um, there are a lot of things that we can't do, but one thing we cannot do is, is try with all our might to enforce our local ordinances. And, um, we, we absolutely instructed the town that that's what we want happening. So. Do you mind if we leave it there, Matt? Get back to, uh, community policing?
Yeah, no, I, and, and that's fine. I, I, I just, I just wanted to put that out there. I've been in your seat, Don. Um, I understand how that goes. And I, I know that the town is doing everything they can, but I'm just not sure that people outside of the, the noise area are aware of how bad this has gotten. Uh, and, and again, I'm not getting on you guys. I'm not getting on the town. I'm not getting on anybody. I've been there, uh, with different issues. Um, but I just wanted to put that out there and I appreciate you taking this. And I understand one hundred percent that it's not usually, uh, germane to throw things in the middle of a conversation, but I appreciate you taking the call. And, uh, we'll go forward from there.
Gil, persevering with Zoom. I appreciate that, uh, too, Matt. Okay, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Um, so Curtis, I'm gonna, uh, take it back to you. I do see another caller in the waiting room. I'm not sure if this is about community policing, but did, Jeannie has a hand up and, and Curtis, I didn't really give you a chance to finish to your last thought there. Uh, Jeannie, are you on community policing or you, have you?
I'm on community policing, but if Curtis want, if Curtis, you're welcome to go ahead and talk.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I just wanted to reinforce the, the, the message that Stu had in terms of the presence of, of the town, town officials, uh, to listen. So that was, that, that, that was it.
So, you know, I'm, Donald, I think, um, you know, Curtis did send us a PowerPoint right after the meeting uh, on August fifth, and we, um, we'll have it up tomorrow, but we weren't able to get it up in the interim. So if it's helpful to have that PowerPoint up, which will have the original value statement that, um, that, uh, we crafted during the, uh, training, uh, side by side with the revised, uh, what became the vision, vision statement for the town. Have that up for, for the week, um, or two weeks. I'm fine to do that. I do wanna say though, there were fifty people that were participating in the community, uh, meeting. There were ten on Zoom. There were plenty of people that were watching it on CAT TV. And the only comments that I've gotten was that it was a really important meeting and, you know, thank you to the town for, um, for helping facilitate this, you know, community gathering. So, um, you know, I, I, I think it's fine to wait to the next meeting if, um, if that's a pleasure of the board.
Curtis, does it do anything to your process if we wait, uh, for two weeks to move that?
Oh, not at all.
All right, I, I would, I would lean in that direction too then if, um, if it feels like it would include people that didn't have a chance to get, uh, awful comments on it previously. It was a powerful experience. I loathe, I loathe group editing. I, I cannot stand it when everyone tries to edit something all at once. And when you started down that road, I thought, oh my God, what's this guy doing? But it was great to see the amount of participation that came from the community and, and, uh, you know, efforts that came through, some that came through Zoom and, and people, people surprised me. And I would be, um, I would be hard pressed to say anything, but that, that was quite an interesting and, and, uh, quite reaching community process.
Yeah, and the, the, the software that, that I use, PUL everything, the folks that were on the Zoom call, they had the opportunity to, you know, text in their, their, um, responses to the questions.
Yeah, that's true.
And, and, and in the PowerPoint, I included all the word clouds that were generated.
Great. Yeah, those word clouds were very interesting. They maybe require a little explanation, but, uh, just in brief, they were, uh, it was the result of polls. Uh, and hopefully people can figure that out. Jean, I see you have your hand up. There's also one caller in the waiting room. Uh, go ahead, Jean, and then we'll take this last caller. And I think we may have to wrap this subject up at this point, at that point.
Oh, it won't be long. I, um, I agree with Jeannie. I mean, I'm, it's, uh, waiting two weeks is fine with me. It's just, I don't want people who took the time to go to the meeting to feel like all the time they put in is devalued in any way by us not voting on this tonight. And I just wanna make us pause for a moment, that if we don't vote on it tonight and we, and we allow the community to digest it, are we prepared to make changes based on community responses? Or are we just giving them a chance to see it and read it and, like I said, digest it? I just think we need to realize what we may be opening ourselves up to by not voting tonight. If everybody's fine with it, it's, like, I say this a lot, it's a hill I'm not willing to die on. But I don't want people who spent the time sitting in the firehouse to feel like, well, what the hell did I bother doing that for? If they were gonna rewrite it. Do you know what I mean?
I, I would just say, I see Jeannie has her hand up, but let me just opine for a minute that we, part of the reason why we hired Curtis is, is to lead us through this process at points that we might get stuck. And, and it feels to me like if anyone offers, uh, useful edits during the course of the week and, uh, and this group in particular, Curtis, feel like it was consistent with the tenor of the meeting, consistent with the, with the thinking that, that went down in that meeting, and it seems like it somehow makes the statement better, I, I think we could consider, but I don't think we're obliged. Uh, if one person calls and says, I want you to take that word out, I, I don't feel obliged to do that. I feel like there was a good, strong community process. I would be very inclined to move it forward as it is. But I am open to, and I hope the rest of the board will be open to, the idea that there may be other pearls out there that, that could be included. Um, but, but Curtis, I, I would think you could be something of an arbiter about whether something was consistent with what the, what the community felt.
Well, I, what, I would post it, we're information only. You know, I, I think the community did a brilliant job at, at, uh, crafting, uh, a vision, the fifty in the room and the ten that were on Zoom, uh, was a representative cross-section of, of the town. Um, and just to, to inform, uh, the community at large that this is the statement that was crafted and that you're gonna vote on it in a week or two weeks.
Um, Jeannie, I see your other hand up, but there's a person in the waiting room that's been there for a while. I'd like to admit that person if you don't mind, and then we'll let you maybe have a closing word, Jeannie. Okay? So caller ending in four five five, I've just entered you into the benefit select board meeting. And, um, I will ask you to please turn down the volume of any, uh, TV or computer you have in the background. And you, uh, appear to be unmuted at this point, so give us your, uh, name, if you will, and tell us what town you live in, and tell us what's on your mind. I, I'm hearing a little feedback, so do please turn the volume down and whatever device you have going in the background.
Okay, guys, how you doing? How's everybody? Uh, this is Sean. How you doing, guys? I'm pretty sure y'all know me. Um, I, I, I just, can you hear me?
Yes, it's Sean Pratt, Bennington for the, for Nancy Lively. Yeah.
Yeah, this is Sean Pratt. Um, I want to start out by saying that first off, when I get on this phone, I wanted to say, I, I don't, I'm, I don't wanna, I'm not here to disrespect anyone. I'm not here to call any more names. Um, I wanna give everybody respect that's, that's there. Um, but I'm, I, I have to say, guys, that I'm very angry. I'm very angry because I feel like a lot of, a lot of people are not being listened to in Bennington. Mike, Mike Bessel got on a little while ago and talked about how he was worried about if the police department wasn't involved in the conversation. I'm pretty sure that they were involved because I feel like you shouldn't be involved in the conversation with the people, especially, um, be- because of the behavior they've been exhibiting towards, towards people of color and other marginalized people in the town. Now, I wanna ask either Jeannie or whoever, well, Jeannie, okay, I wanna ask her and Don if the report said that there's no bias in traffic stops, then why did they just have to pay a thirty thousand dollar lawsuit to Shemal Samuels for racially, for racially profiling and pulling over of a car? Know what I'm saying? They just paid out a lawsuit. And there's another lawsuit declared amicable case that's about to come out soon. So I can't understand why the, the police department is getting such of the benefit of the doubt. I'm not saying disband the police. I'm not saying get rid of the police. I'm not, I'm not saying none of that. All I'm saying is, why do they get the benefit of the doubt? Okay? I, I'm, I'm trying to figure that out because they just had, they, they had training, right? And a few months, a few weeks ago, my nephew had to deal with racial discrimination from a police officer that told him that racial, that, that someone, that if someone calls him a nigger, that is free speech. You think a police officer should be going around saying, if someone calls them a nigger, that it's okay because it's free speech? What kind of training did they do? And that's all I'm saying. All I'm saying is, we're moving forward. You guys are moving fast, right? I do agree with Mike Bessel in that sense. Y'all moving way too fast. You guys, for the first time that I've seen, right, which was a small, good thing, you had the community come in and talk to you guys about the mission statement that you guys made up for the town. Not that the town made it up, not that the town had any input in it, but you brought it to them, right? Thank you. I commend you, right? But that's small, right? Because you still trying to, trying to, uh, 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 make people take, take, basically take what you're giving them without them making the input. Now, I spoke to a lot of people in the town and they, they, you know what they say to me? They just say, oh, the people just gonna do what they want anyway. So now you already know how they feel, right? So all I'm saying to everyone on the board is, listen to everybody. I haven't said not one thing about racism once on this call just now, right? Start listening. You put this, you put this committee together. You put this thing together, right? Now, if you can remember, guys, when we first did this, you guys didn't want it. You remember? You guys didn't want this. And after the George Floyd thing, now it looks good. Y'all doing something to help this. Like y'all didn't want it in the first place. And then y'all get a whole bunch of people that y'all don't even know and don't deal with the people that brought it to you in the first place. It's, 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 it's very rude and disrespectful how you guys are going about this whole thing, right? Now, all that report did was exacerbate problems. It didn't help nothing. That report did nothing but exacerbate the problem. Because now you got a guy walking down Main Street with a rifle, an AR fifteen with a mask on, right? I know, cause I already, I, I'm the one that called the goddamn police. And everybody's just walking past him. Now, Jeannie, let me ask you a question. What if that was me walking down the street like that? Totally different, right? So now, if I get in trouble for anything, I'm gonna mark off that box white because all colors matter, right? Every color is the same. That's what Vermont been going through. Stop trying to pass this information on. I've already spoke to Curtis Reed, me and him talk. I respect Curtis Reed because he's one of the only black men in, in Vermont that I can look to. I can't look to no, no other white people. So my question is, if the town didn't get, wasn't worried about pullovers and discrimination, then how come they just had to pay a thirty thousand dollar, uh, lawsuit? And, and I know they did because I went up there to pick it up with him, to grow into. Can someone answer that? And I'll be quiet from here.
Okay, Sean, thank you very much for calling in. And there is a lot, I guess I should let one of Stuart or Dan answer that. There's a lot to unpack in that, uh, case, but we have agreed not to say anything about that settlement.
Well, you ain't gotta say nothing about it. All I'm saying is, if that's the case about discrimination, how come they just had to pay a thirty thousand dollar lawsuit? How come, did they have to pay a thirty thousand dollar lawsuit?
Well, our, our insurance company advised us to sign that, uh, but I.
Right, right. But I'm, I'm, what I'm telling you is, they had to pay that. I was, I was, I was with the guy. Y'all better hope I don't get in touch with Claire Amable.
I understand.
Cause I'm gonna tell them to go for the gusto.
I understand. Well, they went for the gusto.
No disrespect. I just, nobody can answer that question, right? Okay, that's fine. You don't have to, but.
You can answer some of it, Stuart. Is, how much can we answer before we, uh, get past the mitigated agreement?
Well, I mean, it was, it was a settlement of a, of a lawsuit that began in, in twenty fourteen. Um, and, uh, it was determined by all parties involved that the, it was best for everybody involved that we settle, uh, for the thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the money was paid by our insurer who had to agree to the settlement, as did Shemal, agree to the settlement.
Shemal, Shemal, Shemal.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And, um, all, all charges, uh, of, of racism and discrimination were also, uh, not admitted to and not part of the settlement. So the interpretation, uh, is that it was settled, uh, on a mutually agreed by all parties involved.
No, you, you, you settled the fact that you couldn't talk about it. We could talk about it. Because we actually, you, they tried to have that provision stayed in there that we can't. Because we actually, you, they tried to have that provision stayed in there that we can't talk about it. But we're definitely gonna talk about it. We could talk about it, because they tried to say that, huh?
You are free to do so.
There was a, there was a clause in there talking about, we won't be able to talk, Shemel won't be able to talk about it if he wants to settle. Now, my question is, Stu, right, with all due respect, and this was for anybody, please, I need any of you guys to answer it. My, my question is, right, they had to pay that thirty thousand dollar lawsuit, right? But how, how come, my thing is, how, how come, why did they have to pay it? What, it, it, it's no discrimination, they had to pay a thirty thousand dollar lawsuit to a black kid that's nobody, really? So you're, you're saying they just had to pay it because it was settled out? Well, obviously, there was a settle out because there was, there, there, there was admission of guilt there at some point, right? On the town, on the.
No, there was no admission of guilt. If you read the settlement, there was no admission of guilt. It was settled on a mutually agreed upon by all parties involved, that that was in the best interest of everyone to not continue this long lawsuit that had been going on now for almost, uh, well, a little over, uh, almost four years.
A long time.
And, and so, it, it, it was best on everybody's behalf to settle it. There was no admission of guilt, settlement was agreed to by all parties involved, and that, that ends it for us, Sean, you can do.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
You can do what you think you need to do, but that ends it for us, and that, that's really all I should say on this whole thing.
Right, that's cool, and I'm not, I'm just, I, I just, and I heard from you, right, but I'm just saying. Taking, giving money to a black kid because you got, this town, I'm just saying the town and the way it operates is discriminatory towards people of color. That's what I'm gonna say. So I can't understand, and this for anybody that's listening, we can't understand why the town would just give thirty thousand dollars to just somebody just 'cause they had a kid, especially a kid, a black kid. If someone, a, a, and, you know, that's where I stand. You guys are not just giving out money for nothing. So this just wasn't something that was dragged on and dragged out. Okay, you didn't admit it, but it's basically admission of guilt. Hey, Kobe Bryant didn't rape that girl, but he paid her, and then they said that that was an admission of guilt, right? Okay, so we know how, we know how things work, but if you wanna write things down and do things like white men do, right, and write things down because the power structure's there how it is, then that's fine. I understand that, I got that. That's legal, I guess. Meanwhile, there's a guy walking around with an AR fifteen. And guys, we know that white supremacy is what's driving everything right now. A friend of mine's in North Adams just got his house shot up by, by one of those, uh, uh, militia groups down in North Adams. There's one up here, partly called Slate Ridge. And then we got a guy with a mask walking around with a gun. What if that was me walking around with a gun and a mask? What would happen to me? I think I know the answer. But that's all. Thank you, guys.
I hear you on that one, Sean. That, that's, that's really upsetting for us as a community, and it's really, it's yet another.
So we can't move along on this, on the select board and act like everything is peachy cream and everything's everything for all the women on there that got grandchildren and kids, right? We can't, we can't just act like this is okay. I'm not saying that we, I'm not saying that we go and harass the man, but we're definitely not, but we're harassing Joelle and putting his business on there. That was disrespectful. Why don't you at least talk to Joelle so he can at least defend himself? He's gone now, guys, he left. He, he left. He's gone. So you got him out of town, okay?
Yes, we, we, we not continue this discussion. I, I understand Sean's upset, and Sean's, you know, maybe you could call me in the morning, Sean, we could talk about these things.
Who is this? Who am I talking to?
That was Stuart, uh, Stuart.
Oh, Stuart.
Sean, the, the whole thing about the ACLU is tricky for us, because we have, in our agreement, agreed not to tell what might be our side of the story in this as part of the settlement. And I can only ask you to believe that these things get settled all the time and, and in the wild hypothetical case that the, uh, that we thought we would win that, uh, situation, it could have dragged on for years, our insurance company.
Well, well, if you thought you was gonna win it, why would you put Black Lives Matter in the street? Because you definitely don't believe that. Because that was definitely a case for racial discrimination if you guys were running to try to win it. It's just, it's confusing to me, but I don't wanna keep you guys. Stu, if you wanna talk sometime, we can talk. I ain't got no problem with it. It's just, I don't know who you guys going to. I would, it, when, when we come to talk about racial issues, I, just like I told, I, and, and I spoke to Sarah Perry, and I spoke to, um, Bruce Lee Clark. Listen, I know all the black people out here. Nothing can get past me without, without knowing that. Y'all need to talk to me. I know what's going on. You know what I'm saying? That's all I'm saying. And I don't got Stuart Hurd's number, but at some point, I hope I will, and I'll talk to him. But I hope I didn't disrespect anyone, and I apologize, so. Wildly, but I didn't respect anyone, but.
No, thank you for calling in. We appreciate your words.
No problem.
Sorry, don't have all the answers, um.
No, I'm not, not looking for the answers, but don't always look to protect yourselves when somebody's trying to get accountability from you guys. 'Cause this town is all about accountability and making sure that people pay for whatever they need to pay for. So if people are doing the wrong thing, they need to be called out about it, and they need, they, they need to do what everybody else that has to do that in this town, whether they black, white, or whoever. Because you come, they come down on a lot of marginalized poor white folks too. I just came from a kid's house and gave him a PS four. That's what it's about. I'm about to try to do a mentorship program, you know what I'm saying, to help a lot of these kids. Specifically, the, the black kids that don't have nothing and, and that are lost, lost. You know? So I just want you guys to just open up a little bit more to the people, to the marginalized people. And if I hurt anybody with my words, I'm not trying to, all right? 'Cause we're all a community, and we all trying to do the best that we can. So, thank you.
Okay.
And I, and I swear.
Thank you.
Um, Curtis, any thoughts? Are you, um, no? Anything else, um?
Thought Jeanie wanted to say something.
She had her hand up, then it went down, now it's back up. Go ahead, Jeanie.
No, I, I, I don't know. I, you know, I, I think, um, I think as a community, the vision statement that we crafted last week is, um, for me, it feels like it's a starting point for us to really come together as a community. And, you know, I appreciate that Sean was there and that, um, you know, and that he was willing to participate in that community effort. Um, you know, I, we will be a different community. We will be, we are becoming a different community, and I, I, I think that the process we're going through right now allows us to control, to, to the extent we can, the kind of community we become. And for me, that's exciting, and that's really important, and I'll keep working to see that change happen.
Yeah, that's great, and we, um, yeah, I've said this before, we're not good at this. The old, old way of doing government was representative government gets elected, people come to the government if they have something to say, and the government either takes the thoughts or not, but that, that is not what's been happening in, in select board politics recently in Bennington. Not very many people, a few people, but not very many people come to the select board. This is more of an outward-reaching process. We knew we weren't gonna be good at it, we're not that good at it. Uh, we tried to hire somebody who had a lot of experience doing that. That's you, Curtis. Uh, you know, and we are asking you to pull us out of our, uh, comfort zone, which is, you know, having meetings and having people come to us, and, um, so I, I know, I, I think Sean's absolutely right that we do need to do that, 'cause it's, it's hard, and we're, we're, you know, we got, we got some, we gotta do better.
Mm-hmm. Can I say one more thing? I just wanna say, like, the one thing the com, I hear in the community all the time, the one thing I hear in the community all the time is that when Stuart Hurd leaves, Dan Monks is gonna just slide in there. Now, I'm not even saying that you guys are saying it. I know it's not coming from you guys, right? But this is the mentality of the town, right? Dan Monks, no, he gotta be elected, just like you just said. Like, it has to be a vote. But so many people in the town, there's a segment of the certain people in the town that won't come to you guys and, and, and voice their opinion. You know what I'm saying? And that's all I'm gonna say. I think we just need to fix that, and I don't know how to go about that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Sean, for your thoughts.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I do have to just say, just remind everybody who's listening that Stuart Hurd is a employee of the town, not elected, as would be the next town manager. I, I know that's a fine point, but, um, people seem to forget that now and then, and I, I'm not saying you did, Sean, but I, I just wanna make sure.
Right.
My board hires the town manager, the town manager hires everybody else. That's our, that's our, um, that's our structure right now.
That's how much I'd have touched a lot of people on, even me sometimes, so, all right. I'll get off, guys, go get some.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, bye-bye.
So, we are, remember I told you I was gonna get you out of here by eight? I lied. Bald-faced lie. Once again, it's eight-thirty and we have half of our agenda still on, but I, but I, I did also, uh, give Curtis the, um, basically the permission to slow down and take all the time you needed on this, because, yeah, I mean, reflecting back on one thing Sean said is, you know, for some people, this process feels like it's going too fast. For other people, it's excruciatingly slow. Uh, I'm not sure if we're, we're in the right mode or not, but we are trying to make sure that this has enough committee input and is paced properly. You know, there's some urgency to this moment. I think we do want to keep, uh, this reform effort moving along. On the one hand, on the other hand, uh, you know, I, I understand what Sean's saying, and we do need to make sure we take time to get it right too, so. We'll just keep trying to find that sweet middle ground if we can. Curtis, what's our next step with you?
Um, well, the, the next step is uploading this information, the bibliography, and, uh, and then forming the committees, the, the work groups that are gonna look at, at policies. And we're waiting till after the legislature has, uh, reconvened, uh, to find out, you know, what the executive branch or what legislative branch will do around, uh, you know, oversight. Uh, and then on Sept- September thirteenth, September fourteenth and fifteenth is the training around community policing that, uh, I believe there will be a couple of slots there for, uh, some community members. So, but, but that, I think that, um, the chief is, is handling that process.
Okay, so Jeanie, you'll make sure that there, there's plenty of lead time communicated to people about that meeting and about how to attend and how to sign up and how to participate. Okay, that's, that's a, a good month or so away, more than a month away, so should be plenty of notice, but let's not let it slip until the last minute before we let people know it's happening.
Right. No, otherwise, it's all good. I'm, 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 I am encouraged by the work that's been, been done thus far, and, um, like I said, we're, we're doing well, and so.
Okay.
Yeah, so anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you for joining us, Curtis. I am so, uh, sorry that you had to wait for so long, but, um, your, your patience is very much appreciated, and we'll, uh, we'll just keep doing the best we can with these Zoom, Zoom calls until we, uh, till we feel safe meeting in person, until the numbers start going the other way and everybody feels like it's the right, right thing to do.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Great, thanks very much.
Sure.
So, board members, we, um, we have a, we have the ability to speed things up a little bit if we want to, um, but I would like to not put off the same things we put off last week, this week. Uh, I think we have a Citizens Advisory Committee protocol in front of us. It has two very minor changes to it. Um, could we at least pass this a, as an interim? Town Bank can interim Citizens Advisory Committee protocol, so we have something in place so that people know what the, what the deal is, and we can continue to change it as necessary, but Jeanie, would you?
Care?
Or, or Bruce, Jeanie or Bruce, or Dean, somebody from the committee, would you like to talk about the, um, three minor changes and, and why they're in here? Well, Jeanie?
Uh, well, so the three minor changes, I'll start off and Jean and Bruce chime in. Uh, first, this is an interim, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee protocol. So it is to, um, serve us, uh, as, as a select board is, uh, serving as a review board until, uh, until that changes. Um, in, under one, um, we have, uh, added that, um, when a complaint is received by the Bennington Police Department against an officer other than the chief, and when the complainant alleges conduct that reasonably could be considered unprofessional, the chief, or, we added, or the chief's designee shall investigate the complaint. And that is just to provide some, you know, some, uh, leeway there in case the, the chief cannot respond.
Or, yeah, yeah, right, is on vacation, is just, is, uh, in a hospital or something like that, right?
Yeah. And then, um, after conferring with the IACP, they suggested that we add a ninth, um, uh, step in the protocol, which is, upon the conclusion of any disciplinary and or criminal proceeding involving alleged illegal conduct by a particular police officer, all related records shall be made public to the extent authorized by law. And we added to that, such records, including video footage, shall be posted on the Bennington Police Department website for a period of thirty days, or otherwise made available for pub, uh, public review. So this sets a time limit on how long the material will be up and available to the public.
Yeah, and this is at least somewhat in response to our, um, first effort that we, where we followed the Vermont State Police, uh, Advisory Commission advice on, on releasing footage immediately and making it available to all. We did it as part of a, um, special meeting. Uh, we took a lot of criticism for making it too available, um, uh, there's a certain element of that that is understandable, so this is our attempt to, uh, following the advice of others to bring it back to a point where that material is available. It's available for a somewhat limited period of time. Um, it, everybody knows where it is. It's going to be the same place every time, but it's not going to be on our, uh, on our meeting stream anymore.
And it, I.
It could not be, um, on the town website, either it would be on the police department website.
Right, and it, it, uh, Bruce and Jean, feel free to chime in here, but, uh, every, uh, the state police, the Attorney General's Office, the IACP, uh, all the entities that we spoke with all felt it was very important that everything be released that, uh, is used by a review committee to make a decision.
That's correct. Yep, and so we're planning our way into this. It's not something we've done before. You know, we're following the, the best advice. Yeah, I appreciate all the criticism we've gotten from pretty much every quarter, but we're trying to figure out the best way to get this done, and this is, this is our interim proposal at this point. Go ahead, Jeanie.
Did they not recommend, um, a timeframe? You know, once the decision is made, does it need to go up on the website within forty-eight hours, or would, would they let that be?
Immediately.
IACP.
Immediately is what they said.
Immediately.
And that, I think that's why it says, upon conclusion. So the assumption is that as soon as, as the decision is made, the materials are released.
Right.
Okay, that's good, and that, that doesn't say immediately to me, but, I mean, upon conclusion doesn't say, but, but I guess.
Well, immediately, if, if it happened to fall on a weekend, or if there was some reason why it couldn't happen immediately, I, I would think that, you know, you'd need some sort of, if you wanna get into wordsmithing, we could add some sort of reasonable, as soon as is reasonably possible, or something like that.
Like, that's important to know, that it needs to go up as soon as possible, or within a timeframe. I don't know, that's just.
I would be uncomfortable talking about a particular timeframe, if only because that opens up lots of other issues, but I'm, you know, I'm, I always assume that we've, we've, would follow, this just could be my lawyer background, I guess, that when, when we're doing something, upon completion, it's when, when it's reasonably possible to be done. But if we need to say that, we can say it, you know?
The court assumed really. The court assume really scares me, so.
Well, I understand that.
When Bruce reads it, but, but I'm open to a specific suggestion, Jean, if you have one.
Mister Chairman?
Just a minute, Jim. I'm gonna ask Jean first and then I've got Sarah in line and then you can be third.
I was, I, I would be happy even if it just said as soon as possible, upon conclusion.
Could we put that at the end of the first sentence?
Yes, we could. At the extent authorized by law, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's an important addition, Jean.
Or as soon as, well, as soon as possible, yeah. Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, I still don't feel that people will be comfortable voicing their concerns and complaints if names aren't redacted and pieces are not obscured.
We got pretty, we got very strong feedback that if we redact names or cover faces so that they're not recognizable unless it's a minor, that, that we open, that the process is open for criticism.
Imagine, imagine, there it's flipped. I'm sorry, Jean, go ahead, Jeannie.
And then all of this is public information.
Yeah, and imagine it's flipped. Imagine there's a situation where the video is proving some sort of really uh hideous police uh practice or, or some discipline uh thing and we, you know, we're redacting names, we're covering faces. I mean, I think it goes both ways and the idea is just to go for complete transparency um and, and really not hide the ball. This, this, or did decide that we wanted to protect minors to the extent that we could. And I think that's a reasonable, um, I think that's a reasonable precaution. We also um.
Be further in, so I'm still not comfortable with that.
Okay, well, go ahead Bruce.
Well, I, I thought Jim was in front of me, so um.
Uh, you're right, Jim doesn't have his official hand up. Uh, so go ahead Jim and then uh you go.
Well, I thought, I thought the question before the board was about uh mission statement. Am I, am I, have I lost track?
Yes, we're, we're now talking about, we have moved on uh. We have, well, we didn't, you're right, we didn't take a vote.
Well, I'm calling the question on it.
Alright, so yeah, we didn't take a vote. Uh, it seemed like we had reached a consensus, but go ahead and call the question, Jim.
I've just done it.
What's your, what's your motion?
Um, either we accept it or we don't. I'm calling for a vote.
Uh, I think we had, as a group, decided that we were gonna table it until the next, our next meeting to discuss it then and have an up and down vote then.
Thank you for that moment of clarity.
Everybody wants to second it, you can welcome to at this point.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the, the question now is, do we, the que- you, would you repeat your motion please, Jim?
I call the question on whether or not we, to accept the mission statement that we as a board and w- with the consultation of those who attended um uh the meeting last week, to accept the mission statement and move forward.
Okay, and uh, go ahead. Alright, well, let's, let's have some fun with this then, if you want. Go ahead Bruce.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with doing it that way. And I thought we had reached a consensus, but I'm happy to just vote no. Um, and the reason I'm gonna vote no, and Sarah, if you're gonna withdraw your second, I'm gonna stop talking.
Yes, I thought we were voting to table it. I thought that's a motion.
No, we, Jim is voting, Jim wants an up and down vote right now. So, what you seconded was an up and, upper down vote right now.
I very much understood, misunderstood that then.
Okay, so your second is withdrawn. Do I have a second to Jim's motion? Jim, I'm sorry, you're on your own in this one. Do I have an alternate motion?
Uh, I, I'm gonna, for the purposes of moving us along, I'm gonna, I'm going to move that we adopt the interim Citizen Advisory Committee Protocol, which we were talking about. Um, and if I have a second, I'm just gonna wanna say something to Sarah about names and, and faces.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay.
Sarah, yep, if, if you don't mind, I, I wouldn't mind just answering your question. And I realize your discomfort, but the, in the, if you really have a problem with that, you really have to take that up with the Supreme Court of Vermont. It's they who have said that, that basically this is a public document and may not be tampered with, except in, in some very um well-defined areas. We don't have a lot of flexibility here, it seems to me. And um, and so, I understand your concern. It's one I share, but it's not one that I can, we can win. So.
Thank you for being articulate about that, uh Bruce, in the way that I was un- unable to at this point in the evening. Um, but Sarah, I do think that, look, it's not, either we share this stuff or we don't. We don't get to monkey with it.
I do have something that I, I was hooked on and um, so my concern was that showing these could reasonably be expected to endanger the life or physically safety, physical safety of any, any individual, which I do feel would happen. So, that's why I feel strongly against that.
I don't quite understand your point, I'm afraid. Can you sit, run, run through it one more time, what you.
Yeah, so I feel that showing people's faces and not obscuring them or not redacting names would endanger their physical safety and possibly um have retribution against them.
Yep, well, it's a reasonable point and I think that would have to be taken up on a case-by-case basis. I, I'm, I'm with Bruce. I'm not sure we can override the Supreme Court on this one.
I believe that isn't brought statute um section three six, three seventeen. See?
Sarah, it is, but it is, but it's been interpreted, that statute's been interpreted by the Supreme Court. And their interpretation is much narrower than yours or mine would be. That's, that's all I was trying to say.
Can I just say something? If, if this were to happen and it, and it will, we, we would have time to look at the video, Bruce, tell me if I'm wrong, and get some advice of what we can and cannot do to legally release it the way the Supreme Court intended. Is that not, is that not true?
That, I mean, the only reason we would be releasing it is if we had already seen it in the decision-making process. So, yes, we, you know, um, we would make a decision similar to what we made um to some degree in this last instance, uh that certain faces, when we, to the best of our ability, were in fact blurred out on particular um videos. Uh, so yes, you know, in between the time that we deliberate and the ti- in executive session or, and, and the time that the public session happens, we would be making that, those kinds of decisions with the assistance of legal counsel. And, and I'll admit, I'm, I'm, I'm of two minds about it, but I generally think, I, Sarah, I agree with you that, that you could read that very expansively, but the Supreme Court of Vermont simply doesn't.
So, listen people, it's ten of nine. Um, I really would like to have an interim policy in place. Uh, you know, if, if we could, we can continue to work on this if you want. Sarah, you could bring alter- alternate language. There's no reason why you can't take it up again. But look, as long as we're going along, we should not be flying uh without some sort of policy in place, is my opinion. Um, Jeannie, go ahead.
No, I would just like to make a motion that we accept the interim Citizen Advisory Committee Protocol with the one change that we made in uh number nine to add as soon as possible.
As soon as possible. Second, if I, if I hadn't already made that, second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Not seeing any, I would say, board members, please unmute yourselves. All in favor of adopting the interim Citizens Advisory Committee Protocol as presented and amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we now need to do a roll call vote. Um, because we're online, so I'm going to say, uh Bruce Lee Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Jean Connor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeannie Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jim Carroll, how do you vote?
Yep.
Sarah, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote in the affirmative. So, uh, we have adopted this uh interim Citizens Advisory Protocol. And we will move on to the next thing, which is select board vacancy. Uh, as you know, Stuart, I don't know if you'd like to present this, but as you know, there's no reason we have to fill that vacancy at this point. I think it's uh fair to say that if we appoint somebody, we give them a leg up on the next election. That doesn't seem particularly fair. It's true that we uh appointed Bruce when, Bruce Lee Clark, when uh Carson removed himself, but that was in a situation where the vote was statistically uh almost impossible to differentiate between the, the first and second place. And uh, so it, it feels to me like that's not a pres- precedent that we necessarily wanna follow. It, it feels to me like we should consider um a, a different way forward and I would be open to uh suggestions from the board. Just, go ahead, Jeannie.
Oh, I would like to make a motion um that we not uh fill the current vacancy on the select board until the next election.
Okay, motion's on the floor. Oh, I have a second from Jean. Alright, any discussion on this?
I could actually just say something uh regarding Maria. Uh, I spoke to Maria Scully and um she, she thought it was very nice that we taught her. She is taking her time to reevaluate her time and her prior commitments. So, she, she did communicate that to me and um just wanted to let everyone know that. And she, she might be interested in the future in running.
I hope she would. Maria would be a fantastic asset to this board if the time comes for that. And um, I, I wouldn't wanna deny her the, the privilege of running and being elected under her own steam, um, which I think is the best way for democracy to work whenever possible, so. Okay, uh, we have motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Not hearing anybody, any, I would ask the uh board to please unmute themselves. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're gonna leave that seat vacant for now. We can revisit that decision at any point if, if it's in the board's best interest, if something happens to one of us or anything, any set of circumstances changes, but that, that is, for now, we'll leave that seat open. We will let uh democracy play out uh at town meeting, when the best democracy happens. The seventh item uh is borrowings. These are, this is nothing new, people. These are things that we've seen since budgeting time last winter. Uh, this is um very uh clerical stuff. Stuart, um, you are looking for a um, a motion to uh weave the rating, waive the reading of the resolution and to authorize the chair to sign the loan agreement or the general obligation note and the resolution and certificate. And then a second motion um to uh waive the reading of the resolutions and authorize the board chair to sign the note. And um, just to remind everybody that the first one for lead uh services is completely forgivable. We are approving that and we fully expect to get every dime of that back. The next one is for the um equipment that was in the capital plan, including the roller that was twenty-three years old when it finally became inserv- unserviceable. And um, so thank you for using that up. Uh, road crew, I know they've um got a lot of payment over the years, so.
And there are actually two there, Donald.
Yes, two se- two separate motions. I need two separate motions, so I need.
Well, I will make up the first motion, which has to do with the lead uh line abatement.
Okay.
I would, I would move that we waive the reading of the resolution and authorize the chair to sign the loan agreement, the general obligation note and the resolution and certificate.
Thank you Bruce. Do I have a second on the lead line?
Yeah.
Thank you Sarah. Um, do I have any further discussion on that? If not, please unmute yourselves. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Do I have a second motion for the um?
I think you could bo- you could combine them because they're both capital equipment notes, Donald. So, if you wanted to do one motion to cover both notes, I think that's legitimate.
You know what? Let's just belt and suspenders. Bruce, give me another motion.
Yes, I would, um, I would again on, on the general equipment um uh make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution and authorize the chair to sign the loan agreement, the general obligation note and the resolution and certificate.
None, and the non-arbitrage certificate, right?
And the, yeah, and then non-arbitrage, right.
Do I have a second?
Certificate.
Yeah, thank you Sarah for doing that again. Uh, all, uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Borrowings official. Stuart, I just have to get you the blue pages back, is that right? Or do I have to get you the white pages back too?
Uh, the one from People's Bank, the two capital equipment loans, those I need the original signatures for. Otherwise, you can s- you can sign and scan and return the lead, lead abatement loan documents to me.
But you need just the blue pages returned or do you need the blue pages that two?
Oh, no, yeah, just the, just the signature pages, Donald. I have, I have all the other documents.
Okay. We are moving on to a manager's report. Uh, there is unfortunately some kinda heavy stuff in here, Stuart. Um, uh, I know we wanna get out of here. It's five of nine. But I, I do think we, at least two of these items, we really need you to um, or maybe three, we need you to really uh give us a full nine yards.
Okay, well, I have actually two action items. One is relatively simple. It's uh to place the assistant treasurer's signature on uh four different accounts at People's Bank. Uh, that is a business deposit resolution. Uh, and I just need a net uh motion authorizing the chair to sign those documents and return them to me via scan or otherwise.
Jeannie, you making that motion? No?
I have a question. So, I just, and I don't mean to insinuate anything bad, but are Joan and Renee related?
Yes.
And that's not a problem?
No. The, the treasurer selects his or her assistant. And, and Renee actually is, is also the uh uh S V S U business manager, financial manager. So, she's very qualified for the job and has been doing it actually for oh, a number of years.
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna, like I said, I didn't wanna insinuate anything. I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, I just wanted to point that.
There's no conflict there.
Jeannie?
Um, I wanted to ask, do we also um need to put road closure or school street during Labor Day?
That was coming next, Jeannie.
Oh, okay, okay, never mind.
Okay, I, I'm looking for a uh motion to uh authorize the chair to sign the uh business deposit resolution.
I'll, I'll move that if, that we authorize the chair to sign the uh, what would be authorization.
Thank you Bruce.
I'll second it.
Thank you Jean Connor for seconding. Uh, any further discussion? No? All in favor, uh, please unmute yourselves. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Again, very clerical stuff here.
Yeah, well, this one's not so clerical, but it's pretty quick. Uh, this came to me today. Uh, the uh Better Bennington Corporation and the Chamber are, are combining to put on a Garlic Town USA on Labor Day weekend. Uh, and they are making a formal request to close School Street from Main to Pleasant on Saturday, September fifth, from seven AM until six PM. I can handle all of the parking restrictions they're looking for, but I do need your authorization to allow them to close that road.
Sounds like a good idea to me. Garlic Town.
Any more details on what that means, Stu?
Oh, it's, it's a rel- relatively lengthy email, but they are, they're going to be having vendors locating in parking spots along Main Street and, and various other streets. They're gonna use parking lots that are available to them to have additional vendors selling all appropriately distance. Uh, they're gonna be selling uh uh foodstuffs, uh uh takeout food from various restaurants, which is why we're closing School Street, that portion of School Street, 'cause that's where people are gonna be able to dine. Uh, and uh, uh, so it, it, it looks to be um like a pretty interesting event on, on that given Saturday. And it, it'll actually run, I think, from something like ten in the morning till six or seven at night.
But Stuart, my read on this from, from what I've. But Stuart, my read on this from, from what I've heard is that it's, it's not your average, uh, street festival. This is your COVID, uh, to be fine-tuned, socially distanced, um, all precautions to, this is the, trying to find a way to offer people something to do that's still safe, that may seem unsafe to some people, but, uh, but the, this group is making every effort they can to continue to have there be fun things to do in Bennington even during the time of COVID. So, I, I don't see this as just another Fall of the Blazer or something like this with everyone pack cheap jowl. This is a, this is something that's meant to be very tuned, finely tuned to COVID.
That's correct, Donald.
So, board, given that, this doesn't seem very hard. Can, can we, uh, can I please have a motion to, um, try to have Garlic Town, uh, do a COVID-friendly version this year?
Some moves.
Thank you, Jean.
To close School Street for Labor Day, whatever the date was, for Garlic Town.
So we have a first and a second from, from Jeanie and Jeanie, and, um, do we have any further discussion on that? Okay, if not, I'd ask you to all please unmute yourselves, and all say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Uh, and so that's, that's on. Stuart, go ahead and let them know that we're excited to see what they can do there.
We glad to do that.
How about the camp and the masked man?
Yeah, the, the S V C camp, well, as you, you discussed already tonight, um, the order was issued, uh, I believe Friday. Uh, it provided for a discontinuance of the noise after eight PM. They were to move into the, uh, gymnasium for their gatherings. Um, apparently that didn't work out, uh, as we heard tonight. Um, so Dan has already said, we will be going back to court. Um, complaints, uh, I see that Sarah has passed on additional complaints, uh, from some of the residents. Uh, so we, we've got some issues, uh, still dealing with the camp. Um, and we'll, we're, we'll take whatever appropriate action there is. Uh, regarding the masked man, and those of you who read the banner this morning, I think it's pretty clear, the town has made its position on this pretty clear. Uh, Vermont is a open carry state, uh, therefore he is allowed to carry his weapons, uh, out in the open. Uh, his mask, I think, and I agree, makes it, makes him more intimidating to people. Um, uh, but, uh, as, as he made his point to the banner, he's out protesting, uh, his, his right to bear arms and for free speech. And, uh, uh, he will, I suppose, do that until such time as he decides not to. Um, so that's, that's where we are with that. I know it is, is, it's unfortunate. It's not really good for the community because it is intimidating. Uh, I don't know whether that's his intent. Uh, but, uh, he is allowed to do it under the law. And other than that, um, I do highlight that, uh, we do have, uh, at least two properties that have come to my attention that have been, uh, the owners have passed, uh, with no apparent heirs. There is a procedure under law where the town can move through the probate, uh, court system uh, to take the properties and, uh, sell them to recover whatever taxes and legal fees might be out there. Uh, but all excess funds must be used to support the school district. So I, I will be talking to, uh, you folks about the particular properties that we're looking at, and then I will be working with, uh, Rob Williams' office to, to follow through on that process, should you decide that that's something you want to do.
Okay, more on that to come.
Yeah, more on that to come, and that's, that's really all I've got.
Uh, select board, it's after nine. It's time to wrap this up. The only thing that I really want to, um, if, if you will allow me to sort of have a last word, I, I did wanna, uh, put up one thing which Shannon Barsati sent, which is, uh, time sensitive. So August thirteenth, from six thirty to eight thirty, there's going to be a, uh, COVID nineteen recovery forum. This is something that everybody, everybody is invited to be part of. It's, uh, I think the governor's office is, is sponsoring this, and they're really looking for participation. There's a registration, uh, to, to join the meeting, which you can see online here. And, um, there's another, you can also call, email, or call in to become part of it. Again, this is August thirteenth, from six thirty to eight thirty. So, uh, I think this is on our website. I know Shannon Barsati has, has made it somewhat widely available, and I, I do hope that people will participate in this, uh, as able. Board, unless there are other necessary board items at this point, I would, um, well, let me make space for that. Is there any necessary, uh, last, last items? Go ahead, Bruce.
Just a reminder that tomorrow is primary day, and if you haven't voted, you can vote, starting at seven AM tomorrow at the firehouse.
Right, and if you've already voted, don't do it twice. Those are the, by me.
I just wanna make a really quick announcement. The rec center is closing for maintenance from, oh geez, August, uh, yeah, August seventeenth through September eighth.
So, uh, I'm gonna bail on, uh, agenda items for next meeting. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yes, so, uh, for Battle Day, for the reverse break, if anybody wants to register for that, that is on the chamber side. So please feel free to register for that as well.
Great, thanks again for your work on that, Sarah. Uh, nice to, nice to have a Battle Day party. We'll, we'll get you an agenda for the twenty-fourth. Is that our next meeting? Uh, yes, for the twenty-fourth. Uh, we'll get you an agenda for that, and I swear to you, we will try to make it a lighter agenda than this one. I will, um, I will be missing a lot of fun and games during the next couple of weeks because I'll be in self-imposed quarantine after Sunday, um, after I help one of my daughters get to a part of the country that I only feel somewhat comfortable her going to. Uh, and when I return, I'll be in self-imposed quarantine, so I will not be available for an in-person meeting until September. So my suggestion would be that, if you all will, uh, go along with this, that given that the COVID numbers are not improving very fast, that we hold our next meeting by Zoom. Is that the consensus of the board? I'm seeing a lot of nods. Jim, are you up for that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. So we will do, uh, we'll meet on the twenty-fourth by Zoom again. We'll take it from there. Thank you, everybody, for three hours of thoughtful, uh, insightful, um, patient uh, work on, on these many, many issues, and thanks to the public who called in. Thanks to Cat TV for sticking with us for three hours. Mike Cutler and Josh, you guys are great. Really appreciate everything you do. Same to you, Dan and Stu, so have a good evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We'll be looking for, yes, motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, Bennington. Stay safe.